Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I have 6:30 PM on my watch and I'd like to call together the study session for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge for March 5th, 2018. Thank you all for being here. We're going to come up with the sign-up sheet for citizen comment. And as soon as we have that, we will move forward with that part of our business meeting. I will note that we, all of the councilors, are here tonight with the exception of Ms. Duran, who I believe is excused tonight. So, thank you all for being here, members of the public and staff. Thank you. All right, we will go to our citizen comment. And if, when I call your name, if you would come to the podium and adjust the microphone so that you're clearly on the record, we'll get all of your comments there. And thank you for being here. Mr. Tony Collins is our first speaker and Mr. Dick Orcut is on deck. And if you would please give us, give us your first name and last name and spell your last name and give us your address, please.
My name is Tony Collins and I'm from Highlands Ranch, 2871 Windridge Circle, Highlands Ranch, Colorado, 80126 zip code. I'm from the Denver Men's Senior Baseball League and Men's Adult Baseball League. And I've been either president, vice president, or field manager for 30 years. This is one of the first, first fields I ever played at here. I've played over 500 games myself there. I play on two to three teams a year. I still play in a 25-and-over and a 35-and-over and 18-and-over league. I'm 65, so... Our league has played over 5,000 games at that field in 30 years. And I've probably been there myself a thousand times. Either I help a lot fixing it up and redoing the mounds and donating money and time to the field. It's, it's kind of like a home away from home for me. I've been there, I used to live in Lakewood for 15 years and I was here all the time from probably February till November, our playoffs end in November. My brother Walter, it was his, this is gonna be tough, it was his favorite place. He just passed away last year. And he lived like just a mile from here. I used to pick him up and he'd come to the games all the time. So, it's a pretty special place for me. The other thing is, here's a paucity of lit fields in this town that we can play on. Most of the fields are either college, metro, and, and mines, which either is cost prohibitive or they won't let you on because they're using it themselves. And then there's pretty much softball fields that are lit after that. There's only, I think there's less than five lit baseball fields that are accessible to our league. And if that league's closed down, it's definitely gonna totally, our league's gonna be totally different. I won't be able to play night games anymore. And so, it's gonna be a big change if it does shut down. And I don't know if you guys know, but I probably talk to 300 or 400 people a year that want to play in the league. And all I have to do is say, "Oh, we're at 44th and Field." Everybody knows where it is. So, it's not just, you know, the people in Wheat Ridge. Almost everybody's played here since they were like five years old till, I have a guy in the league that's 74. So, I just wanted to let you know my feelings about it and, you know, I really didn't even know this was gonna happen until, I thought it was a done deal when I heard from Wheat Ridge Direct, they said, "Well, we're closing it down after next year." But I didn't know we had a vote in it or say until Raleigh called me. So, and that's why I'm here today. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dick Orcut and Raleigh Sorrentino on deck.
I live at 10033 West 30th Avenue in Wheat Ridge. Have lived there for 50 years. I don't want to wear this thing out. I've been here before. You know what I think is interesting? When the vote for the bond issue came, which I certainly voted for, I think the baseball world was a little naive. I think many of us that support baseball had the belief that the money that was gonna be attributed to that would be for renovation of Anderson Park in many categories. But I don't think any one of us ever imagined that the demise of the field was part of that. I blame the carelessness of those of us that were involved who have not been more active from the get-go. But I can guarantee you that this runs very deep, the support of the field and the concerns that we have for it. Tony, who just spoke, runs the Men's Senior Baseball League. You've heard about his organization. There's another sister organization called the National Association, the National Adult Baseball Association. That organization is more or less a sister organization to the one Tony runs. They have 80 to 90 ball clubs ranging from age 18 to 50. And its national headquarters are right here in Littleton, Colorado. They've got 2,000 to 3,000 teams across the country, but here in Denver, they've got 80 to 90. That organization has told me that they could play on that field every day of the week and both days of the weekend for six to seven months a year at a going rate that certainly is exceeding what is being earned by the Parks and Recreation at this point in the city for the use of the field. They've never been able to get on the field. My endeavor is with a college-age team. We're much smaller. We only have about 12 teams. I work strictly with college-age players and have for 33 years. But I have watched that field be used by hundreds and hundreds of people growing up who now are seeing their kids and their grandkids and the generations that are gonna come. And this is my question. With a shrinking of baseball fields going down in number as the communities of Colorado are going up, if you let this park go away, it's only gonna be a moment before you're gonna be pushed by your contemporaries to find a new park. It's not gonna go away. You have a field that's there. I'm told that the park is to be used for other purposes, and it can be. The Parks and Recreation can control that park on the days that they need it and put it to full use in other days when it's not needed. There's lights there. Those lights could be used for any other event. The Carnation Festival itself can be utilized to the benefits of having those lights, but any other activity that you choose to use on that field, the lights can still be beneficial. There's already an entrance onto the field. It's good, it's big enough to get all the equipment to care for the field on. People can come and go on that park right by the parking lot anytime you need. If you need more access to it, it would be very economical to have an entrance from the right field. I, I don't see how you can cause yourself the problem of getting rid of something that's a tradition for the city of Wheat Ridge that's been here for years and years and years and can remain there, only to put yourself in a position to now serve your community by figuring out where do we recreate new fields and, and go through the same thing that you're going through in, in trying to figure out how to go through rezoning and re-cost. That's the part that's hard for me to understand. This is a landmark for Wheat Ridge. It's well-known. It's one of the few parks that are there. And in my opinion, the Parks and Recreation Department have not utilized that field as an income producer to the extent that they could. And I think that, in my own mind, there may be an undercurrent of wanting to get rid of the park and reduce the endeavors of work that they think is there, only to have the field sit and be used on occasion for other, for other endeavors. And there's plenty of space in this park for the other endeavors that are already on the docket. Concerts, other activities, carnations, festivals, and things of that nature. It's already there. It, it doesn't have to be changed. And I, I'm having more trouble grasping why this field would be beneficial to be eliminated and where in the world are you gonna replace it and how much turmoil do you have waiting around the corner for other people to be standing here complaining about where you're gonna move the field?
That's true.
I sure hope you'll give a second and third and fourth thought to this. And I apologize that the baseball community didn't present themselves early on. I don't think we had the slightest idea that we would ever be in the position that this would even be thought of as the need to discuss. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Raleigh Sorrentino.
Raleigh Sorrentino, 4175 Teller Street, Wheat Ridge, Colorado. You folks have heard me so many times, I'm not gonna go over the previous speech, but I have some information here. I, I came tonight to listen to what you had to say. I, I would think that maybe you would want to solicit comments after the studies presented because I don't know what you got there. I'd love to have an opportunity to speak to it possibly afterwards. I don't know how, how that works with this right to speak. Also, just a message from Adam Miller. He couldn't come tonight. Adam Miller is the Wheat Ridge High School baseball coach. He supports this effort to save the field. He has, he's probably the number one, if not the number two, user of the field with his high school baseball program. He's got three baseball teams there and one field. Anderson Park being the second field that he uses for his JV and freshman teams. Tony Collins is the main user of the field with his MSBL. And he's the one that writes the checks to the city quite a bit every year. But I, why am I doing this? I'm 73 years old. I don't have any baseball teams. I'm not coaching. My kids are not playing anymore. It's been a field and, for years and decades, which is great. But the future is, the only thing I can say that the reason I'm here to try to save that field, it's an icon in Wheat Ridge here and it's in an ideal location. The foul balls don't go into the arterial highways. The, the lights are down low in a floodplain where they don't bother the people. It seems like it's just an ideal location. But again, I would like to hear what, what you're looking at here as far as new baseball fields. This is a, this is a full-size regulation, lighted baseball field, which is the only one in Wheat Ridge. If they want to build another one, that's wonderful. But I certainly would hope that any thought of eliminating the existing one you have would, would not happen until you have another one in place to take its place. I mean, right now, I wanna, I would like very much to have an opportunity to speak after the presentation that you're making tonight on a new location. So, is there, if there's any way for me to hold my comments to them, that'd be great. That's all I can think of right now. There's some other people that couldn't make it tonight to the study session, but the main one is Adam Miller, which you know. He's, he's got baseball practice tonight and he, he may come later, but I doubt it. And there is another one, another gentleman that walked in later. Maybe he'll be given a chance to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Sorrentino. And I will, I will respond to your, to your comment about speaking later in the meeting. Currently, our, our council rules stipulate that in study sessions, we really only take comment from the public at the opening of the meeting. But we, we always have comment at the opening of all of our meetings.
Yes, I understand that. But I'd like to hear what you have to say.
I, I'm anxious, I, I hope you'll sit down and, and take a listen. And now, is there anyone else in the room who has come, who is not on the list, who would like to speak on any item that is on our agenda tonight? Please, please come to the podium and adjust the microphone and introduce yourself. First name and last name. If you'd spell your last name and tell, give us an address.
Tom Sundheim. I live at 5601 West 35th Avenue. I spoke last week, excuse me, I spoke last week and the only thing I would like to comment on, because I think you've, you've heard time and time again from the three gentlemen or who are here this evening, the concerns and, yeah, the concerns. But as I posed last week, I've got questions for you guys, so I'm hoping in the course of this evening, because I was led to believe there would be some open conversation, whether it's pertinent to this or the other uses. But first is why not improve the present site, the baseball field at the Anderson Park location? And if you move it, if there's conversation about that, where would you move it to? That would be the second question. The third is, what, if there is a vision at all, what is the vision of the city council group regarding baseball in our community? And, and the other, the other fourth, there's actually two more questions. How many open field areas? Because I'm, I'm under the impression that open field facilities is a very important or a much-mentioned topic of conversation, which gives more flexibility to an area, which I can appreciate it. But how many open areas do we already presently have in existence in our community as to what we would lose there in the ballpark compared to what we would gain for open park space? And the last but not least is, isn't there a gain from the ballpark's location and the lighting? Isn't there a gain to the Carnation Bowl? Or the Carnation, not the Carnation Bowl, excuse me, that was the football game that our kids played in when they were in Little League football. We won, we actually, actually, my son's last year, and he also played on this baseball field that you're proposing to taking apart. His, his Wheat Ridge team won the Carnation Bowl when he was, was it 12 or 13? How old were they last year? But it was fun. It was great. We had great fun with it. But the whole, the whole complement of the lighting and I think to the point of, you know, maybe being a little more flexible in the use of the area rather than taking it out completely. And other than that, I think everything else has been addressed. I'm real, I am personally disappointed that the baseball coach and the NABA and MSBL guys didn't show up because I think they could've shed some great light on this topic. But we all have our own priorities and, as you folks do as well. So, with that said, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the, in the hall tonight who would like to speak on any item on the agenda? Okay, we will close our public comment and move on with our agenda. Our city manager is back in town and informs me that we don't have any staff reports tonight. So, we will move on to agenda item number two, the Anderson Park baseball field relocation options.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This item was requested by city council to be brought back for discussion. And Ms. Manwrayne, our Parks and Recreation Director, is here for that item.
Ms. Manwrayne?
Okay, thank you. So, as we all know, we're here to discuss the location or relocation of the Anderson Park baseball field. It was, as part of the adoption of the master plan for the park, the master plan that was adopted removed the baseball field. Excuse me. Oops. Turn this right side up, maybe it will be good. So, as part of that adoption, city council requested information on possible options for relocating the baseball field and the costs associated with that. So, I wanted to give a brief summary about the reasons that it was originally or initially recommended and the information that went out with the bond issue to relocate the baseball field or actually remove the baseball field. So, we're all starting from the same, same base of information. As you know, in the bond information, it was to create an area for a festival-friendly park. The majority of the use is by one user group, and that's the MSLB. They are mostly non-resident adults, April through September. Limited use by the Wheat Ridge High School third-level baseball team. Two months of spring use and they don't use the lights. So, this is some of the reasoning behind why we thought it would be a good recommendation to, to use the land in a different way. And then the cost of replacing the lights, as I've mentioned before, the lights need to be replaced, whether the baseball field stays in the location it is at or not. And then, staff receives periodically, and I don't know how often, but neighborhood complaints both to the east and south regarding the light pollution, the glare, et cetera, when the lights are on at night. So, just so again, so we're all starting from the same base of information. A regulation-sized baseball field is four acres of land, and that does not include any of the acreage around it for amenities such as parking. It's a 400-by-400-foot field. And it has a backstop and outfield fence, and it's 375 feet from home base to the outfield And I'll just state here that oftentimes, all of us interchange baseball and softball. And I want to talk about a softball field a little bit because when you start talking about field usage, they really aren't interchangeable. So, what Anderson Park has is somewhat unique, and it is an adult regulation-sized baseball field. It has a warning track, a 90-foot baseline, a grass infield, and a pitcher's mound. And it serves ages 14 through adults. So, that's why the high school plays on it and the adults' men's league. So, I provided an aerial for you so you can have some kind of perspective about what four acres looks like, because I think that's difficult sometimes if we're not land managers or used to buying property or appraising it, whatever. But that's, that is about four acres, and that's an aerial view of, of the baseball field at Anderson Park. So, you can see that it has the grass infield, which is unique to an adult-sized baseball field. I'm gonna tell you that boys' baseball plays on grass-infield baseball fields like this, but not at regulation size. So, regulation size has 90-foot baselines and they don't move, as opposed to a softball field where you can set and reset the bases. So, our Wheat Ridge boys' baseball, Little League, plays on what we'll call a softball field. We don't have any boys, little boys, I don't want to call them little boys, 14 and under baseball fields for Wheat Ridge Little League. So, a softball field's about two and a half acres. You can see it doesn't have a grass infield and it doesn't have a pitcher's mound. So, that makes it different from a baseball field. It's 260 to 280 feet from home plate to fence, so about 100 feet shorter. Adult men's baseball does not play on these kinds of fields because they're not big enough for them. The baseline lengths are moved, as I mentioned, depending on the age group, and they'll start at 50 feet and go all the way to 90. And then ages served is eight years through adults. So, we have two, excuse me, two of these at Prospect, two at Panorama, et cetera. We have quite a few softball fields in our parks. So, the differences are the pitcher's mound, the size of the field, grass versus skinned infield, base lengths, flexibility in moving the bases, the ages served. And youth baseball can be played on a softball field up to age 14, depending on the size of the field, is dependent on the age. But softball is not played on a field with a grass infield. And so, that's why in the past, when I've said it has limited use, I don't mean it had limited use in terms of how many days a week it was played on. It had limited use in the ages that it served. So, MSLB does rent the field. They're one of two users of the field. They use it seven days a week. I don't know, practice every night during the week. They play under the lights and they have games on weekends. So, they have fairly extensive use of that field, and we rent that to them. We get about $9,000 a year in revenue from the baseball league, Men's Baseball League. Okay, so when we went on our mission, which the direction we got was to look for alternative locations for a baseball field, it helps me to have you understand why we didn't find very many of those, because I've shown you the size of the field and the four acres. So, our search methodology and criteria is that we, our community development staff searched using the GIS program for vacant parcels, both private and city-owned of four acres or larger. And we included current parkland, open space in parks, including existing fields with the potential to be expanded in size. So, four acres or larger, not a site of impending redevelopment such as Clear Creek Crossing, vacant sites or portions of the site which are vacant or underutilized, potentially accessible from a public street, existing parks to determine if softball fields could be converted to regulation-sized baseball fields. And the use is not restricted by open space resolution. So, for example, when we bought the open-space land south of Clear Creek at 41st and Kipling, where our new trailhead is and the trail that follows to the west, when that was purchased, our city council wanted to ensure that it could not be developed parkland. So, the resolution purchasing that from open space states that it must remain natural area or open space. We don't have a lot of those, but we do have that one in particular. So, folks, I often got comments early on, "Why can't we have football fields there?" Well, it's designated open space by purchase. So, the results, we found four, five parcels that met the criteria that I listed. Four are on private property, two were residential lots, and two are commercial parcels, and one existing park. The one existing park that I feel comfortable identifying, of course, is Fruitdale Park. And I have a red box around the south in the Fruitdale Park. And it would take, that's really the only open area that met all of the criteria. There are no, there were no acquisition restrictions when it was purchased with open space and, but the park master plan process was very similar to the adoption of the Anderson Park master plan. It was done by city council with neighborhood input. No existing park fields have the space available to be converted into a regulation-sized baseball field. So, example, if you look at Creekside Park, we have two softball fields down there. There isn't enough room to make those bigger. They would overlap the Clear Creek Trail even if we went into the parking lot. So, we did take, take a look at all of those. We also looked at Anderson Park to the north, and that area was also too narrow. So, under costs, for construction, and these are broad construction numbers, the estimated cost to build a basic regulation-sized baseball field with small allowance for grading, standard fencing and backstop, dugouts, warning track, concrete for bleacher seating, bullpen for practice, warm-up pitching, et cetera, and a standard turf grass system, which is sod, not AstroTurf or fake turf with a drainage system underneath, is anywhere between 400 and 450,000. This list on this slide are variable land costs that aren't included in that. So, we would need to, if there were land purchase, any water tap fees, more grading, retaining malls, et cetera. That 400 to 450,000 would not take care of those costs. The lighting costs, I did solicit a bid from Musco Lighting based on the Anderson Park ball field, and their estimate came in at 285 to 325, which is what I've been estimating through the process, that to replace the lights is approximately 300,000. So, the estimated cost range to relocate the Anderson Park ball field is 685,000 to So, I gave several options here in terms of moving forward with the information that I have presented in terms of an alternative location for the Anderson Park. I have presented in terms of an alternative location for the Anderson Park ballfield. And that's what I have.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will open this up to comments from council. Do we have questions from Ms. Manwaring or comments on the process? Mr. Pond?
Just trying to help a couple of the questions that came up get answered, and one would be, because there's a lot of discussion and or questions about the current flexibility of the space in Anderson Park on that regulation field. And so I've got some assumptions about that, but I want to really hear how you would look at that in terms of putting that into active use in a festival condition, putting a lot of people on it, et cetera, and was that considered in the, in the process? To be able to use this regulation baseball field as a flex field, which is, which I think is the programmatic intent right now in the master plan.
Ms. Manwaring?
Well, I really, I'm not sure I can speak to what all of the festival needs are and how they would use that field if it were reconfigured. Currently, they, they do like the field, as it is my understanding. Maybe Leah can help with this, because they like to place the fireworks behind the existing fence, so that's helpful. And then I believe that I've heard that they also use the lights to help light the festival.
I guess my, my question more specifically is, can this be used as a flex field? In other words, can you put a lot of people on there to sit down and watch a show or something like that and actually occupy it as a flexible, a flexible field, much like the, the, the master plan calls for that, that flex field? And clearly, that doesn't seem to be the case. We're not using it that way. We're not opening it up and letting 1,000 people come in. But I actually heard tonight in some comments and some questions that, that it can be used in a flexible way. I'm just trying, I'm trying to understand, you know, would you recommend going that far to basically, you know, you know, open it up for, you know, flexible uses? I think I asked this question when this came up before about being able to remove the fence in the, in the outfield in order to, to expand to the south and really fill the, the, the intent of the master plan.
What keeps this from being flexible is the outfield fence, and we really, the outfield fence could not be removed and still have it function for men's baseball. So within the limitations of the outfield fence, we do, we could have other practices here, but because of the dirt infield, the change in elevation, et cetera, it's not as flexible as a tabletop area, which is proposed in the current master plan that was adopted. Also, these baselines, it just, it just removes some of the flexibility of the tabletop.
Ms. Davis?
So I, I just have a couple of questions. So I think it's funny, I think on your first slide, that, you know, there's, one of the comments was that neighbors complained about the lights, because those lights have been there forever. I mean, and I'm guessing some of the neighbors either are new or have been there forever. So I think that's interesting. But I guess one of my questions is, a lot of times, you know, we've had people say, "Well, the festival needs the lights." So I guess what's, I mean, if we're doing away with the lights, what are the, what's the festival going to do about lights?
So I can go ahead and speak to that. The baseball field lights are the only source of light for the Carnation Festival, with the exception of the midway vendors that provide their own lighting systems. So in the event that the baseball field lights are removed, we would probably have to acquire lights as a part of our budget.
So how much is that going to cost? I mean, I guess, I, I, I mean, I, I hate to say that, but okay, so we spend $300,000 on new lights. How, how many years is that going to be on new lights? I mean, so that's going to be, let's pretend, $15,000 a year for lights for the festival times 10 ye, I mean, I guess, I, I guess we keep talking about the festival needs lights, but we're taking away the lights for the festival. And then I guess my other question is, is, I mean, I don't know about you, but I think all of us have seen us move Mile High Stadium on an inch of water when it used to be a stadium and a baseball field. I can't believe that we can't move a fence to make this a more flexible field, when the old Mile High Stadium used to move on an inch of water to become a baseball field. So I guess, how can we not make a fence movable to make this area more flexible? I mean, I, I do, I appreciate that this was the master plan, and I appreciate that we had an open process, but I guess, I just, I don't appreciate, I guess, I just question that there's like no flexibility, that we can't move a fence to make this area more flexible. I mean, we've, we've moved an entire stadium on an inch of water. I mean, so I, I guess, can't we move a fence and make it flexible? Aren't there ways to move fences to make areas flexible?
Well, certainly, there are products, there could be products out there that are portable
I, I guess so, I, I don't understand. I mean, at one point, you just said, "The problem is, we can't move the back..."
Well, this is a permanent fence. I'm referencing a permanent fence.
But we could create...
I mean, the permanent fence could be removed, and we could look into a portable fencing system. That would be up and down and up and down depending on the event. And I also never heard from the Carnation Festival during the focus meetings that the lights were a priority for them. That was not a comment that we heard, so.
Ms. Dozeman?
I was actually a part of the focus groups, and I was the one that did bring up the lights per the festival. And I was the only one, unfortunately, that raised concerns about losing the baseball field. I also live a few blocks away, so I see the lights, which are not a problem. And although I believe we've heard some complaints, some residents along Clear Creek also have mentioned to me that the lights really help deter the homeless population from camping in their, in their backyards. But I just have a couple of questions about, so is the Everett Baseball Field a regulation-sized baseball field?
Yes.
Okay, and that is Jefferson County?
That is, it belongs to the school district, correct?
Belongs to the school district. Would there be any way that we could somehow partner with the school district and put lights on that field, and we maintain the lights and they maintain the field? Would that be possible? Or is that...
We could certainly approach and ask them that. My experience in the past is that if one baseball field in Jefferson County has lights, they almost have lights. That one school cannot have an advantage over the other in terms of upgraded facilities. And we found that out because we were the first community to put the, I'm going to call it astroturf soccer field in front of Wheat Ridge High School. And then we went through a process, which I think benefited all of Jefferson County. They all received astroturf fields.
Okay, so I mean, I would, I would be interesting or interested in seeing if we could maybe form that partnership, because, you know, it seems to me, if we're going to be moving a field of this size, and we have very few acreage that could allow for the size of a field in the city, and to that, to the tune of close to $775,000 versus, you know, 285 or 325,000 to fix the lights, you know, it just doesn't seem feasible to me.
I, I will also, just to add additional information, I think that would help the high school be able to schedule all of their games on their field, but it won't accommodate the men's senior baseball league.
Do, do they have summer leagues for Wheat Ridge High School?
That I am not sure of.
So because it's, it's my understanding that maybe they start practicing before the school year starts, or, or, no, before the school year ends, sorry, but they don't have anything as far as a summer league?
They may allow them to use it during the summer months.
So how would we go about beginning that conversation?
I could reach out to the school district and ask them if they would be interested in cost sharing or having lights provided on the field. We certainly do that at Stevens Elementary School. We built the softball fields behind Stevens, and we pay the utilities on the lights.
Wonderful, okay. Another one of my questions is that, in the presentation, it says that we don't, we didn't consider, like, the location as far as the new Clear Creek Crossing. Could you speak to that? Like, why we, why we couldn't consider the Clear Creek Crossing development as space for a new field?
Do you want to answer that, Patrick?
Yeah, I can speak to it a little bit. There potentially could be some excess property that we could look at. I'm not sure if we looked at the size. Did we look at the size of the, that...
There was some excess properties that meant the four acre.
So there, there is potentially some excess, but all the current property that's owned by Evergreen Development is, is, is platted in for development, commercial and residential development, office development. So there's no room on the current property owned by Evergreen Development, but there potentially is some excess owned by Coors.
Mr. Matthews?
While we're addressing that, on a development like Clear Creek Crossing, what are their green space slash park slash open space requirements for development that size?
Well, let, let's not kind of go there. I mean, that's...
Why wouldn't we?
Well, it's, I'm... Are you talking about the requirements for the Clear Creek Crossing development to have open space?
In general, for a development that size...
So commercial property is not required to have open space, just residential development? And my understanding, they have some residential development? And then there's a choice of fee in lieu of parkland? So that's our, and I don't know if Ken would like to expand on that, but that's, that's where that is, works.
Joyce is correct. So there's no technical, like, public use dedication requirement for commercial development? That only applies to residential. For a, for a project of this size, given the amount of multifamily residential that might occur here, I think we often take a fee in lieu. I mean, that's been our, our practice on some of these projects, because the, the amount of land that we would actually get as part of the dedication would not be a meaningful size that you could program into a piece of usable park space. There, there will typically be private open space on each individual development, but that's a kind of a lot-by-lot requirement of about 20%. So those are not, you know, parcels that are bigger than, you know, 10, 20,000 square feet, so half an acre.
Thank you.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Joyce, I'm trying to think back to the original presentation on this. And what I seem to remember about that original presentation was that you had more demand for soccer fields, and that was one of the reasons why you wanted to change this field to soccer fields? Is that true?
That's correct. We have more demand for soccer, lacrosse, and just open practice areas. But also, I will state that I thought the robustness of the public process was good. I thought we reached out to everyone, all of our user groups, but at that point, we hadn't heard from the baseball group that we're hearing from today, so.
And I guess I understood, I understood that wrong, but I, I thought, the impression I got was that the field wasn't used. But you said tonight that it's used every single day in the summer.
Correct. And so I apologize if that was misrepresented. It wasn't or misunderstood. It isn't that the field is not used. It's used by MSLB, Men's Senior League Baseball, which is a metro-area-wide baseball league. You heard from their president tonight. They use it every single day, from 5:00 until the park closes at 10:00.
And so if we converted this to, well, is, is there enough crunch in terms of soccer fields that we need to new fields? I mean, what would happen to our demand for, for soccer fields if we had two, two other fields?
Well, I don't know that I have a black and white answer for that. We just have more demand than we meet. We already actually have some soccer practice under the lights at different times of the year. But MSLB uses it, my understanding from my staff, is from April through the, through And then we'll often have soccer practice at night.
What I remember from that presentation, or at least what I, what I thought, was that if you prioritize what you were saying, you were saying the highest priority for you to make this decision or to, to recommend this was the need for soccer fields. Would that be accurate, or is it the flexibility that's the priority?
No, I really tried not to compare the soccer field usage to the baseball usage, but based the master plan recommendation on the public input process that we received, which was a festival-friendly park, lights or no lights. Apparently, we missed that, the importance of that, but festival-friendly park, use of the land, cost of the light replacement, not really a comparison or demand between soccer, how many soccer players can we put on the field versus men's senior league baseball players. It was really in response to the community that came to our public input process. And again, that wasn't this particular baseball group. I respect their opinions. We didn't hear them early on in the process. So that's, that's really how it evolved into a tabletop, and also because of our performances in the park, that we serve anywhere from 150 to 300 people. We went through a process whether, where that might be the location for the pavilion. Well, it ended up back in its current location, because the users there during the public input process like it under the trees and the shade, et cetera. So we got a lot of public input, and it, and the master plan evolved step by step. But it was never really because we had more demand. We do have a lot more soccer players. You didn't hear from boys' baseball, because they don't use the field. They were in the user groups that came. But you're not hearing from them, because they don't use it, and they don't, they can't use it. They don't have the age group that fits on the field, so. Does that, address your question?
Yeah, it does. So what I'm, the way I understand it now, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that if you prioritize your thinking, the, the two prioritized items would be that there's more demand for soccer and you needed a Carnation Festival-friendly field. Would that be...
That's correct, and serving the residents, the youth residents of our community versus, in all honesty, the men's senior league baseball league, and then adding the cost of the lights on top of it. It became sort of a cost-benefit analysis.
I had Mr. Matthews and then Ms. Davis on deck. I'm sorry? Okay, Mr. Matthews?
Thank you. I had a question. We, we're using some kind of generic terms here, and I would like to clarify them a little bit as far as being flexible. When you look at our drawing that we have up there, if you will notice that in the lower left-hand corner, that's about the left corner of the outfield, and the upper-right-hand corner is close by the sidewalk, the upper-right-hand corner, that's close to, the fence is right there by that sidewalk. So the only place that the outfield fence really cuts that off is the arc going around the lower-right-hand corner. And I'm, I'm not sure what we need to have, like, carnation-friendly. For instance, you could, instead of removing the whole fence on the left, on the, on the first baseline, you could put in a section of fence that's a gate, perhaps, and open that up and have, you know, 10 or 20-foot wide access for ingress, ingress and egress into that area. And then if they wanted to do something on given nights, I'm sure the baseball people would be willing to let us block out one or two nights where we wanted to have an activity under the lights. So the flexibility there, I'm not sure what, what we're really looking for as far as for being flexible. I mean, I think if we get outside the nine dots a little, you know, we can, we, we don't have to make the whole fence go in and out every other, all the time, just open up a gate, and then you've got good egress and what have you.
Well, I, I think the flexibility also applies to this, which is not a flexible space, right or wrong. It's, you know, you lose most of this in terms of sitting people on it, et cetera, or having it be an open, or more, more area available. I'm just trying to answer your question. I'm not trying to be a proponent one way or the other, but that's, that's an area that isn't usable as flexible space. The rest of it, you're correct. I think there are some creative ideas about having a more portable fence product, wider gates. There are, there are different things that can be... There are different things that can be done to make this area more functional.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppe?
So, you know, I just want to clarify that it was very clear to me when the original presentation was done was that, yes, the field does get a lot of use. The point is that it's a single user. It's a single type of user versus a multi-purpose field. And it's not just about just our soccer that we currently have and just our carnation festival that we currently have. It's flexibility for our future and for planning, for being able to plan other things for the future in our community. We don't currently have a space that is multi-purpose, that is, has the location, the size, that has the support buildings and the infrastructure. We don't currently have an all-in-one space. And that was part of the public process and kind of how the public came to that decision. And so it's, again, it's not baseball versus soccer, and it's not, oh, just the carnation festival, because we could have the ability for other things to come into our community if we had the space. And we have to be really careful about... We're landlocked, so we have to be really careful and put a lot of planning and thought into what would we need in our community in the future. And so for that reason, I supported that plan. And I do support looking at other options other than Anderson Park for baseball. I like Leah's idea about maybe partnering with one of the schools. And I don't know a lot about Pennington Fields, but it seems to be an underused field that is a lot of space over there. And I don't know if that's big enough or not. But I think that we should look into different places and maintain what our community said they wanted in Anderson Park.
Ms. Davis now, and then Ms. Dozeman on deck.
So, I have a couple of comments. And so I think, you know, I appreciate the process. But I think there's some of the process that we've missed the boat. And I agree. I think that, you know... And I even think the men's baseball group admit they missed the boat a little. And that they didn't know that something, that their field was in jeopardy. But I think one of the things is, I appreciate the public outreach. I appreciate that this is what the community came and said. But I think that, here's the thing. We, you know, we have said here that, you know, one of the things we've said is if we... The one of the things we've said is that the lights are old. If we are going to keep the lights, they need replaced. It's $300,000, okay? We've already heard the carnation festival needs lights. So we're going to be paying for lights regardless, some kind of lights for the carnation festival. And I bet you money, we're going to need lights for other things. Concerts in the park, et cetera, et cetera. If we were to have had the big pig roast and blues and pig roast thing, we would have needed lights for that, or whatever that was supposed to be that ended up somewhere else because we couldn't pull it together. We would have needed lights for that, and that would have cost us money as well. I do not think it's a bad thing for the city of Wheat Ridge to have a park with lights. And I think the thing is, is if we yank the lights out of this park because it's going to cost us $300,000, and then we go, oh, shucky darn, we should have thought of that, and all of a sudden, we don't have lights in a park, and five years later, we end up putting permanent lights in a park again. I think we're going to tick some people off because all of a sudden, they're going to be... We're going to be putting lights in a park that were not there anymore. And then you're going to have neighbors mad because they're going to say, wait a minute, those lights weren't there before, and I bought this house, and now my neighborhood's lit up where it wasn't lit before. Whereas if we keep the lights in this park to begin with, then we have a lit park in Wheat Ridge. I don't know that we're doing our city a service by not having at least one lit park. So personally, I do think that we should have one lit park. Because I don't think it's a bad idea to have, like, concerts in the park in the evenings and we have one lit park. I really don't. I really think we should keep the lights in the park. And I know... I'm not sure. I think we're talking about that it's the cost, but I think we should have it. And then, again, I know, I understand that this isn't very flexible. But I think it is flexible. I mean, again, I mean, you go to the Rockies game, they have fireworks. They throw a tarp over the front of this. And... Or they have concerts. They throw a tarp over their baseball part of their field. They put a stage there, and they have a blowout concert. You know, I think there are flexibilities to this area if you want to be flexible. Now, if you don't want to be flexible, yes, you can look at that and go, here's a baseball field there. We can't do anything with it. So, you know, I appreciate that. I appreciate that the men's... It's only the men's baseball league, and to heck with them, they only take every day in the summer. And to heck with them, the majority of them aren't Wheat Ridge citizens, and they weren't involved in the community process. Shame on them. And to heck with them, because they're not Wheat Ridge citizens, and it doesn't allow flexibility. But I don't... My problem is, I don't think we're being flexible. Because, again, I could put a tarp over that. I can put a stage there. I can put Toby Keith there. I can put lights there, and I can have a concert there, just like the Colorado Rockies do. So I don't think we're being flexible. Again, I also appreciate the community process. I still think that's a big enough space for a soccer field, too, if I did the outfield part. I don't know. I'm not a sports person. But I still think we could have a win-win. I do think we should have lights in this field, and I think we should keep the lights in this field. Because I think in the end, pulling in lights temporary for all these festivals are going to cost us $300,000 in the end. That's just my two cents, but I'm just... Just, that's my two cents.
Thank you, Ms. Dozeman, and Mr. Urban on deck.
Thank you. So I just want to make a few comments as well. So I was a part of the community process from the very beginning. I represented the Wheat Ridge Carnation Festival in this, in the focus group, and I live a couple of blocks away from the field, as I had said. So I really appreciated the robust community process that you went through in this. I do believe that you did a great job with pairing some of the community input meetings with the performance in the park. And at the beginning of the focus groups, we recognized that this field isn't just used solely for the carnation festival, but we wanted to have space for other festivals to be in the area. And so in that respect, it did come out of the meetings that we felt like a multi-use field with open space would probably be more appropriate for that use. And we do see more interest in other sports that would be able to use an open field of like that was proposed. I will also say that I was disappointed that we didn't have some sort of option to keep the field and what that looked like, either from a cost-benefit analysis and also with... to propose to the public to see if maybe that was going to be an option that came forth as, you know, of being more, of more interest. And I have already received an email in regards to moving it to Fruitdale Park regarding the lights. Like Kristi had said, those that are not used to that kind of light pollution and glare, I think, would probably be disappointed. So I just have a couple of follow-up questions. I wanted to know how much... Do you have an estimate of how much it costs to maintain the field per year versus the cost coming in?
The cost to maintain the field is right around $48,000 a year. But I want to say that, you know, out of context, you have to take that into context because we have a, you know, $4 million, $3 million budget in the Parks and Recreation Department, and it costs money to maintain parks and offer programs, and none of them are 100 percent self-supporting. Some of them do bring in revenue. So I think it's important to state that you have to have context related to asking the cost of maintaining a specific area without a relationship to maintaining, say, the soccer field across the way. And I did not break down the figures for maintaining the game field on the other side of the park, so... No, that is for the baseball field.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. May. And as we're going through this, one of the parameters that was set was relative to the size of the baseball field being four acres. And it looks like Fruitdale's the only park in addition to Anderson that could hold that four-acre game field. But, you know, as I look at the possible acreage needed for a soccer field, that's like one and a third acre versus the four acres for a baseball field. So in the instance of Fruitdale Park, it would make sense, we could make three separate soccer fields in Fruitdale versus the two that we are now planning for Anderson Park or call it a multi-use field, what have you. But it would seem like Fruitdale gives us a lot more land to work with with respect to a multi-use field, whereas Anderson Park is really the only place in the city that a lighted baseball field can go because it's worked there for so long. But also, just from a land use perspective, we could get three additional soccer fields in Fruitdale versus in Anderson. So I would be in favor of us, you know, moving forward with, you know, continuing to try to find that balance between the different types of fields that we need to have in our parks, but knowing that it's a lot easier to place a soccer field in one of these additional parcels of land than it is a baseball field. And I would be willing to encourage us to stick with a baseball field in Anderson Park and look at Fruitdale as a soccer field.
Do we have some more discussion? Mr. Pond?
I'll stick on Anderson for a second and then ask some questions about Fruitdale, if that's okay. You know, I still stick by all the things I've said. You can look at the tape. I'm not going to repeat them. I will say that I absolutely think we should have lights in the park. So I would support any motion moving forward to look at how we will fund as a part of the Anderson Park, you know, lighting that area. I don't think I've ever said anything different. I think it makes sense, and there's no disagreement on that. As it relates to the field, I'm also... And I asked this, and I said this when we were doing this before. If you can show me that we can do a flexible, you know, a very flexible concept in that area, then let's do it. And let's open it to lacrosse and kite flying and festival whatever, and, you know, and all of that. Probably to the exclusion of men's baseball sometimes. So let's not expect that we're going to sell it seven days a week all year. So, you know, I don't think that's... You know, that's striking a balance where, you know, we're not, you know, we're not going to satisfy some of the folks who've come up and said they want to use it every night. Because I think we're going to have to break it down. We're going to have to maybe even take the mound off and put it back, whatever it is that you have to do to make it truly flexible. Great, let's, you know... But I did not hear those possibilities when this was presented to us before, when we had the designers and staff presenting this before. So until I see that, I will not support, you know, the singleness of use. But that's because I only see a single use. When I see a flexible, multiple use that meets, you know, that can strike a balance between what we heard in the public process, what we're hearing today from baseball folks, then I'm happy to engage in that conversation. But I have not heard that yet. I will ask on Fruitdale, when was the master plan for Fruitdale conducted, the public engagement? When was that? About how long did it take?
I'm going to say, it's done in the early '90s, maybe?
Yeah, so I mean, I am sensitive. That's, I think, good news and bad news. It's been a long time since that was conducted. I think that means that certainly, you know, if we're going to move down and investigate the use of it, it's probably a time... It's timely to have that discussion and even just ask the question whether or not the master plan at Fruitdale is still valid. And I think this becomes a point that can enter into that conversation. I do see it being a difficult one and can be very sensitive to the fact that, you know, new uses, especially lighted uses, I think, could be problematic. However, I think it's worthwhile to consider, at the recommendation of the Parks and Rec Commission, frankly, to consider whether or not, you know, opening up that discussion and having some master plan revisits to Fruitdale, including looking at those fields, would be useful. So out of all the recommendations, if I can just kind of like chime in on what the report was asking, I would like to move, to ask a few more questions about Fruitdale, including, you know, would we open up a master plan or public process that would look at it, and how would we go about doing that? I think the... I appreciate the comments about Everett and other Jeffco uses because frankly, you know, this is even the other use that's in this... The second use in this, in this field is a school use or a Jeffco use. So I think that participation or partnership makes sense. So I would like... I would support that notion of working with Jeffco to see that. And I also appreciate the nuances of the development at Clear Creek. And I didn't think there was extra space, but, you know, but I think to the extent that there is, and it's owned by Coors or something else, I guess I would appreciate some, you know, some feedback from staff as to whether or not that has any legs at all out in that area.
Additional comments? Mr. Matthews?
Thank you. Moving forward, I would make the one comment, too, that I think lighting technology has changed significantly since those lights were put up back when dinosaurs still roamed the earth. As far as our leakage, I mean, Joyce, you know, I'm one of the people that gets the phone calls. And first, within a week after I was sworn in, I got phone calls about the lights at the park. So I'm assuming the technology has improved to where the pollution, if you will, the leakage of light from the site can be... Has certainly been reduced by some significant result, although most of those people probably bought their homes, and it's kind of like someone buying underneath a glide path to the airport and then saying, move the airport. I would behoove all of us, too, though, to enlist the comments and open a dialogue with the baseball folks, since they have been kind of the major single user. And when we do our discussions about flexibility, you know, see what they can offer and bring to the table to help us out with this endeavor if we're going to move forward with it and also the carnation festival. I'm thinking ahead that, you know, creative lighting may not just be for the actual baseball field itself, but there's two sides to every pole. And we may want to be looking at what can we do for our festivals for lighting up areas outside the field where maybe the field stays dark, but, you know, we light up that street down through the park or whatever as we look at flexibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions from the council? Mr. Matthews, I mean, Mr. Fitzgerald, pardon me.
As this was originally, this is a difficult case. I'm... And what seems to be the sticking point, as far as I can understand, is flexibility for the field. Because we, I think, most of us here, a lot of us here, agree that some kind of light should stay there. So if we take the lights out of the equation, and we... Then we sort of start thinking about flexibility for the kite festival we have and all those other, and the carnation festival. I'm wondering, you know, and I really hate to do this, or I hate to suggest this, because I know you guys have worked hard to get to where we are right now, but I'm wondering if we ought to just delay this and do some new looking at what we can do to create flexibility in the fencing and the mound. Because I do agree with Kristi that we could cover part of the infield with tarps. We could have a stage there that is not intended for people to be there. We could have the spaghetti restaurant there, whatever. But even if we don't use that area, there's still a lot of area in that field that could be used. So I'm kind of thinking that we should sort of, you know, at least investigate that possibility before we... before we go forward.
I have Ms. Hoppy and then Ms. Dozeman on deck.
I'm in support of keeping lighting in the park as part of the master plan of the park. I'd also, I'm also in support of looking at the Frutdale Park Plan and seeing if it needs updated and having some more conversations about baseball at Frutdale. I'd also like to see if, like George said, I do, would like to see what is the feasibility of maybe being able to get some land from Coors to do something up near that. I guess one of the things that I'd like to say is, the soccer already uses the backside of that and for practice. So we heard testimony from soccer parents who came in that night and told us, you know, we already use the backside of that for practice as it is. But if you start talking about different mechanics and machineries and movable fences and stuff, then start talking about the cost of staff to staff that. And where's that money going to come from? And, you know, and buying also the new equipment to do that. So we have to keep in mind that any plan is going to cost money. It's just where, like, we were asked, what is our vision? Well, the vision for this park has come through with our citizens' input. And I don't know that I am too willing to wait too long on it, and we've already spent a significant amount of money on it. And so I guess, you know, I support those other things, but I just, I think that we need to move forward and look for a different place for baseball in our community besides Anderson.
Ms. Dozeman.
So because there was such a robust community process, I really do not want to undermine those citizens and residents of Wheat Ridge that were involved and were a part of the conversation and did show up to have their voices heard. And it was my understanding that the baseball organizations were invited to a lot of these community meetings and were aware of the possibility that the field was going to be removed. While I am very nostalgic for baseball, having played softball and having grown up near Anderson Park, I would really like to direct Parks Recreation and staff to kind of look at options for either relocating the baseball field or, and adding lights into the master plan for Anderson Park, because I do foresee that being an issue in the future. So I think that we've had a really good conversation tonight. I think we've come up with some compromises that I think could be a win-win in our community. So I really appreciate you coming out here, Joyce. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions from staff or from council?
I just have, I have just one thought. I mean, I think my intention is not to undermine the community process. I think that with every process, sometimes there's unintended consequences. And I think that in some of this, there's some unintended consequences. And I think part of it is, is after some thought and some homework, one of the unintended consequences is, is a part of the community process, do we know that putting a baseball field somewhere else is going to cost our community a million dollars? That's an unintended consequence. So as a city councilperson, you know, I need to somewhat weigh that out. And so I would hope that as the community process understands that, that that's some of the things that we need to know. And again, like as Ms. Hoppy says, we need to understand as we do the flexibility and we look at, okay, what's, and we listen to kind of what Mr. Pond had said, is if that flexibility's there and we can create a process that it's a removable fence or an easily removable fence and its cost, you know, the cost is okay and it's not, you know, too big, that we know we're going to put, we've already said we want to keep the lights in the park so we know that expense is going to be there. So then there's not going to be lights at two parks, you know, possibly, you know, a Frutdale Park and this, so there's not two lights. So that, I mean, I feel that the intention is not to undermine the community process. I think that there's some part of the community process that was some unintended consequences. And I think that's how I would look at it. And it's unintended consequences of maybe a million dollars to our community that I don't know that I'm willing to be like, oh, well, I didn't want to undermine you, but I'm going to go below a million dollars over here. So I think those are things that, at least if someone gets mad at me, I'm going to say, eh, sorry, but that's kind of how I felt about it. So I think those are things, and I think it's a good point because someone's going to come up and say, you didn't listen to me, and I'm sure they will. So I'll be ready for you when you come see me. But I think if there's a way that we could find the flexibility in the field, the Rockies do, I'd really like to see that.
Seems like we've had a pretty good discussion on this. Is there, is there a genesis for a consensus among the council as to how to move forward?
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment before you go there? Just for some clarification, you were thrown out a million dollars several times and I know Joyce had around 7, 800,000.
Without the cost of land?
Well, that's it. I just wanted to make sure council understands that that's without the cost of land. And if we had to buy land, you know, if we're looking at 10 bucks a square foot, it's probably about another 2 million just to buy land. Doesn't mean we couldn't work with, partner with the school district or somebody else that maybe their land would be, wouldn't cost as much or nothing, but there is potential that if you had to purchase it, it could be another 2 million.
So do we, do we have, do we have any, a motion to make any consensus to move forward on this issue? Mr. Pond.
I'll attempt one and maybe, maybe I'll just do it in parts here so that, and then pause for a second to add, to let anyone add on to it. But what I've heard that I think we're in, that we may have consensus is looking to the Frutdale master plan, as well as the possibility for looking at, testing with the public, the field and lights at Frutdale. Number two, talking to Everett slash Jeffco School District about a lighting partnership or field partnership in some way, whether it's at Everett or somewhere else. Number three, somewhat out of order, but I think we've all agreed on trying to pursue lights in the Anderson Park master plan, that I'm hearing that we're in agreement on that. And number four, some sort of investigation, perhaps cost and/or feasibility of anything at Clear Creek potentially with Coors. Pause there for a second.
So would you like to take all four of those items as one consensus or individually?
Frutdale master plan and study of ball fields at Frutdale.
Okay, so there's a consensus to look at the Frutdale master plan and to evaluate that with a possibility of having a ball field.
Discussion with Jeffco and potential partnership at Everett or otherwise.
Okay, there's consensus on that.
I'll just do it in the order I said it. Lights in Anderson Park as part of the master plan.
Consensus on that.
And finally, number four, Coors, reaching out to Coors and/or Clear Creek to see the feasibility or opportunity for a ball field over there.
Consensus on that.
Yes.
Just as it relates to that area, is the Gold Panning property that we lease in Anderson County a potential site for something like that?
I think that's probably restricted.
I'm sorry, the Gold Panning Park?
The land that's associated with the Gold Panning Park, it doesn't appear to be just related to the riverbed, but it extends quite a bit of ways down.
It actually is. The riverbed and the banks itself is all that's included in the Gold Panning Park.
It looks, just on the maps, that it extends all the way to the Highway 58, but...
On these, actually, Gold Panning is not supposed to be occurring on the north side of the creek to the Highway 58.
I guess my point is that there appears to be a significant amount of acreage in that corner of Highway 58 and I-70, and whether we own that or Jefferson County owns that.
A lot of that's open space, water retention, detention areas. But we, as part of the...
But it doesn't appear as though the Gold Panning Park itself is open space or otherwise encumbered in that way, so I'd like to at least understand that.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
I just want to say about number four, you know, I think we talked earlier about unintended consequences. Even if we find a partner for number four, if we, you know, if we, assuming it's going to cost 2 million for the land, and we find an equal partner, that's still a million dollars for us. That's way more than we can afford, in my opinion. And I can't see any way in blank that that would work out.
Ms. Davis.
I would, I would also ask, and I'm not sure if this is possible, because I know, or I'm guessing it was asked before, but I'm not sure that it was completely asked, was that we go back and we do look at the Anderson master plan to see if there is the flexibility of having that field have, you know, the more flexibility to do as Mr. Pond had asked, would be my other consensus item.
Mr. Pond.
Yeah, and I left, that would be number five.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I know, I know, I left it out specifically just to kind of see if someone would bring it up. I guess my caveat to that, and I won't, I don't need to be the one to put the consensus on this, but I would be sensitive about going backwards. And I heard Councilwoman Hoppy say that, and I agree with that. We've committed some forward momentum, some of it is being responsive to the public input, some of it's being prudent and judicious about how we engage our consultants in work. And so I'd be cautious about stepping too far backwards. However, I think in the normal course, and maybe with some small add services to the consultant contract, in the normal course of moving forward, I think it's reasonable to ask them to, hey, one more time, sharpen your pencils, let us know what the opportunities, possibilities, technologies are for looking at this while keeping it, keeping an eye on the input that we've received through the public process and the intent that came out of that. And so I'm willing, I am willing to do that. I would, my only caution is that we'd be careful not to essentially pause, stop, or move backwards the process of design that's going. And I do think there's a potential to do that, but I would ask staff probably who's engaged in that contract to chime in on that.
Ms. Dozeman.
I just have a question for Joyce and/or staff. Would keeping the baseball field in the master plan impede any of the other design concepts that we've, that came out of the community process?
Would you repeat that one more time?
So if we were to keep the baseball field at Anderson Park, would it impede any of the other design that came through with community input through the process?
Besides the field, that area?
Yeah, besides the multi-use field, like would it, would it prevent some of the trails that I know we had talked about, where the creek access, or some of the playground or...
I think if, if the design is to be reevaluating in that area, the domino effect of that is not necessarily the design, it's the budget. So we'd want to take a hard look at what those budget differences are and if it affects any of the inclusion of other amenities. Because there's some cost savings, of course, in keeping the baseball field in its current location. There's some added costs to replacing the lights, if it's to be a lighted field. So, you know, just doing that cost benefit analysis and then figuring out where the budget is. So we are in schematic design right now, moving into design development. So starting to get a little more detailed as we go down, down the road. And we'll want to know very soon what that master plan or what that, what those decisions are related to that area.
Joyce, maybe this is a good time to speak to these consensus items. Do you think we could investigate these still and still stay somewhat on track of where we're at? Maybe speak to the schedule again on construction schedule, where we are today without...
I don't, I think it would be, I think it's a longer process when you start partnering. We may get a quick answer on approaching the school district about partnering on lighting the high school baseball field at Everett. If they're even, would consider it, that might be a quick answer. If they want to consider it, it might be a longer road. Looking to the Frutdale master plan, that is a long process to set up neighborhood meetings and reopen that plan. I have some sense of how the neighbors in that area feel. We did install a dog park in that park and moved it to the north side of Frutdale because it originally was recommended to be on the south side where I have that outline for the baseball field. So I know the neighbors are engaged and somewhat will have opinions. So that's a longer process to advertise, get public input, et cetera. What was the other one? Pursue, oh, pursuing lighting, that can certainly be added easily into the design for Anderson Park to make sure the park serves that function. They don't necessarily need to be baseball lights or the cost of baseball lights to provide some kind of lighting in Anderson Park, which is not there right now. Our parks close at 10, you know, so, and the festival, I believe, I don't know when the festival goes, a little later, but we can certainly, that one's the easiest one to design that in. We can reach out to Clear Creek Crossing, to that property owner, that's probably a fairly fast process or quicker process. And then certainly we can do an analysis of the existing area of Anderson Park, but that needs to be done sooner than later. And council will have to make a decision on whether they want to readopt that master plan or see a new one, readopt it, go by consensus, whatever you would like to do if you would like to retain the baseball field in Anderson Park.
And Joyce, the current schedule, if there's no changes to design, is scheduled for construction to start after the pool closes and after the Carnation Festival this year, right?
That's correct.
This fall?
We will negotiate with the contractor in terms of when construction starts, but we'd like to have it completed by May 31st of next year.
So do we have other, it sounded like you were formulating another, another part of consensus, so...
I don't know, we voted on mine.
Christie had one on the table. Rerelook at Anderson Park master plan, see the baseball field.
Yeah, well, I guess in order, you may need to restate your consensus, but if it is to direct the design team to look at, to look at flexible use fields, I just, how much, how many more weeks do we have in schematic?
Oh, I would say a couple, two to three at the most.
Yeah, so, you know, the question would be whether or not it could be included in that time period without extending it dramatically.
I would certainly make an effort to make that happen.
And then I think, I mean, I wouldn't want to readopt the master plan. I mean, to me, it would just be some, it would be an update at a future study session after schematic design to look at the schematic design set and to see what their input was. And to that extent, if the consensus is to try to pursue it in that timeframe, in that manner, then, you know, I'd be okay with that.
Well, did you just change my consensus? My consensus is still to have it, to have them consider if there's a flexibility to have the baseball fields stay in a part of the design structure, but allow the flexibility for the other...
But add more flexibility for use?
Area, yeah.
And George is asking, as long as it's in the...
Yeah, I'm just saying, as long as it's in the SD portion of their work.
In the next three weeks.
In the next three weeks.
Is there consensus to look at that design, what other options we may be able to do with Anderson, with the ball field in Anderson Park to give more flexibility within the, within the schematic design process that we're undergoing now? Is there consensus on that?
Or very little delay.
Or very little delay.
I mean, because they could easily be like, oh, nope, it's going to be three more days.
We wouldn't do that.
Yeah.
Okay, I think the spirit of the, you know, the spirit of the council is to see whether that's available. Ms. Hoppy, do you have another comment?
I just wanted to ask that we actually do the consensus on your number four, because we didn't, you didn't get a chance to finish it. we didn't, you didn't get a chance to finish it.
I think we did, the cores.
Okay, so we sort of got, we have five, five areas of consensus. Is that what you've got?
Yep, I got them all.
Okay, we've got them all. Does that, does that sort of conclude our, our discussion tonight on item number two? Thank you very much, thank you very much, Ms. Manwary. I'd like to thank all the, all the citizens that came and spoke on this issue, too. We appreciate your comments and input. Okay, let us move to item number three. This is the tree, the tree grant program.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was another item council asked to bring forward, and Joyce, Manwary, and staff is here to discuss this.
Okay, thank you. I want to introduce Margaret Paget, which I'm sure most of you know, our forestry and open space supervisor, and Robin Rice, our forestry technician, and she's also a certified arborist. So what we thought we'd do tonight, based on the information forwarded to me, which was that you were interested in a tree grant program, working with our citizens, is give you a little background on the forestry program. We have a forestry and horticulture section, of which Margaret supervises, so trees and plants. I thought it would be interesting for you, and also give you some perspective as you make your decision moving forward on the tree grant. Get all my little buttons going. So in 2002, oops, gosh, sorry, got to get a different program. Okay. This might take me just a sec. Okay. So, a little history and staffing background. In 2002, we had seven full-time employees in the forestry and horticulture section, and you'll, you see the list there. At that time, we had a city forester, a dedicated city forester, technician assistant, two assistants, actually, a horticulture technician and a horticulture assistant. In 2002, 2003, as some of you may be aware, we went, we did some downsizing based on the economy and budget, and we actually laid off five of the employees on that list. So five positions were eliminated. Our current staffing in 2018 is one forestry technician, which is Robin, who we met here, and a forestry assistant, and then we have one horticulture technician, which we added back in 2012. And then Margaret, who was our open space coordinator and naturalist, increased her scope of work to supervise the forestry and horticulture tech, or sections. So a little bit, a little bit about their scope of work. We do hire seasonals, depending on availability in the market, labor market, and until the last couple of years, we were doing pretty well with that, both seasonal and intermittent. So if they could work six to seven months, we would hire them. Margaret has recently completed a tree inventory. We're pretty close to knowing we have 8,000 trees in the city's tree inventory, and we're talking about trees located in parks and right-ofways, not open space. So not our natural areas, just our parks and right-ofway. We do include alleys, street scape, and traffic calming islands, of which we have 72 traffic calming islands. The tasks for managing and maintaining trees include that list that you see there, which a tree inventory is always a, a living inventory, as trees change, species change, maintenance needs change, that's tracked through the tree inventory. Our staff interfaces with residents on trees located in right-ofways. So all the trees in the tree lawns, for example, Ames, Benton, Chase, are right-ofway trees that belong to the city. That's also true along 38th Avenue. And then because the city incorporated later, in 1969, some of the right-ofway lines don't necessarily match up with the street lines as they would in a brand-new development. So sometimes we find that the right-ofway is in the middle of someone's front yard, and we actually own the tree that looks like they're in, in, that looks like it's in their yard. So Robin interfaces with them and answers questions, or whatever the needs are. We do in-house removals, pruning, planting, mulching, wrapping, and watering. We have an integrated pest management program, so we do have spray program, treatment for insects and disease. Includes scouting, trapping, we're watching for Emerald Ash Bore. And then we also contract some of the maintenance of our trees. We have a on-call tree list that come, that they put in proposals through purchasing, and then we use them for large tree removals. Again, a list, includes purchasing. We have a Christmas tree drop-off program, where we recycle and ship, make mulch, some education and outreach. We do landscape reviews for community development, herbicide applications, certification for staff, following law, and for record tracking on what herbicides are applied. They're also on our snow removal team for parks and facilities, other respond to on-call, and certainly storm response in case of an emergency. We've had one to two per year since 2009, between our wind, hail, snow, et cetera. So as part of the layoffs, this is the list of proactive tree programs that were cut with, with the elimination of those positions. And then there was no funding, of course, no staff capacity to manage or administer. So we used to do cost sharing on tree planting with private property owners. A resident could call up and we'd pay for 50% of their tree, help them get it planted, help pick out a species, et cetera. That was a program, no longer in place. We had a cost sharing or loan program for dead tree removal, for folks that needed help. Arborous Services and Assessments on Private Property, our city forester would go out to a resident, visit, answer questions about their trees, et cetera. He had code enforcement responsibilities for hazardous trees, so he could tag a tree if he thought it was dangerous or needed to be removed. And then we eliminated our citizen arborist board. Our current forestry programs and horticulture programs include happiness gardens. We have 120 plots at 41st and Ammons. Staff participates on the TLC team, which is a police department program, again, completes community development reviews for landscape plans, and helps Public Works with project reviews, does tree assessments and projects in areas that Public Works is having construction projects. We do tree licensing, we're a Tree City USA, we've been able to maintain that. We do memorial trees in parks through the Wheat Ridge Foundation, and then volunteer projects for, like IES, which is the Institute for Environmental Solutions. We had a volunteer program with them for planting on the Green Belt. And then we do programs with the high school. One Wheat Ridge High School class comes out a couple of times a year, helps plant mulch, and then, and then various scout groups. And then we do have a wood recycling mulch program. We have piles of free mulch, and that's available at Prospect Park. Include some horticulture tasks, just to let you know the scope of our annual displays. There's 102 annual displays, 71 flower beds, 31 containers, 109 perennial beds, and 108 shrub beds. Those are located in streets, parks, traffic calming islands, and the right-ofway. So our horticulture technician does annual design and redesigns of the beds, buys the material, measures quantities, et cetera, locations, plants them, does seasonal weeding and deadheading, mulching, watering, herbicide certification and record tracking as well, is on the snow removal crew, and does on-call response duties. So the increase in scope of work since 2002, when the five positions were eliminated, and then one added back, we added four parks, Founders, Hopper Hollow, Creekside, and Discovery, 38th Avenue Street Scape, Sheridan to Harlan, 38th Avenue pop-up cafes, planters, and the street planters, right-ofway street scape at the TOD site at Ward Road and Tabor Street, 32nd Avenue Dudley Di Arrow, the planting beds on the south side of 32nd. They're un-irrigated, so hand-watered. Kipling and I-70, what we call the four corners, which are the four landscaped areas with our monument sign, and the 58th Avenue median at Target, when Target was built. So these two sections, along with park maintenance, do support each other when needed, and do work across sections, but for the most part, they each have their own areas that they work in. I'm going to let Margaret talk for a little while about our current tree needs.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm going to continue on with the tree needs for parks and right-ofways. We're in the process of putting a 10-year maintenance plan together, and we'll be including costs with that. So, for instance, removing 30 years per, each year in over a five-year, over five years, we could remove 150 trees, we would do rotational pruning, and again, to get through all 8,000 trees, we could do 1,600 trees a year for each of those five years. It's ambitious. And then to budget aerial lift inspections for large trees, and we have about, well, we have more than 300 very large trees, cottonwoods, silver maples, that we don't necessarily know what's going on, what their conditions are, until we're up looking at them from aerial perspective up above. And so, let's see, and then, on to the next slide. So currently, we're doing some hazardous tree inspections, but we're only, we're limited about 36 a year. We had requested a forestry assistant position last, for this year, and it was not budgeted, so we won't request it again in 2019. Let's see, there's pruning that, let's see, that occurs in the parks and right-ofways, that's also contracted. And then our current contractual annual budget for forestry services is $180,000, and this budget request is based on what current staff capacity can administer the contractual work. So that's pretty much what we can manage, you know, the removals and the pruning and, and the hazardous tree inspections, and corralling all the, all the contract work. So looking forward, we're looking again at the Emerald Ash Bore Plan and Program, which will consist of protection, removals, biomass, and debris disposal, and replanting. So again, we'd be treating the highest quality ash trees in the city at about a three-year interval, depending on treatment and chemical used, removing a selected number of ash trees annually, and then replanting the trees where ashes are lost or removed. Thank you.
Oops, let's see where to go. Okay, so we have been able to identify, you have in your PowerPoint, the list of tasks that would be required to administer the tree grant program, all of them very doable. Whether we have the staff capacity, I think you just heard from us that we do not, but there are ways to achieve the grant administration. That would really be to look at contracting it out with a private firm that can do tree assessments. But we'd want to explore that a little, a little bit more, and what that would involve. And some of that is really what we need in terms of the parameters of the program for council. So my next slide is really some of the, if, if based on a $200,000 grant program, I'm giving you some examples of how many trees that you could remove, depending on size. So 36 trees, if they were 5,500 each, it would equal 200,050 trees at four, so on and so on. If you wanted to include pruning in the tree grant program, that you could do 111 trees pruned at, at $1,800 each. And the variables is this list, it really depends on the size of the tree, of course, the condition of the tree, whether stump removal is included, where it is in the resident's yard, is it in the backyard, that usually costs more, the front yard, is there access, and do they have any issues with their neighbors, do you have to cross the land? All of those things have to be figured out. So what we would be looking for from council are these decision points. Do you want to, us to design a program by the amount of funding you'd like to put towards a tree grant program, knowing that we're going to need some additional funding to administer the program, or hire someone to go out and do tree assessments? Are you interested in a specific geographic area within the city? How many trees? Do you have a target for trees, or is it a dollar number? Is this a one-year program, or would you like to extend it for multiple years? That would be helpful for us to know. Do you want to cost share? Do you want, you're, ask your residents to pay 50% of the cost of a tree removal? Do you want any income level qualifications? Is it available to anyone that applies? Is it first come, first served? Or is it based on the tree condition assessment? We really need to have some feedback from you on what you're looking for, based on this information. Yeah, let me get back up.
While she's doing that, Ms. Hoppy, you brought this forth, would you like to open our discussion on this item?
I would, thank you. Thank you for all of this information. I find it very interesting, all the stuff that we used to do for our citizens back in 2002. I think that those are some amazing things that we did, especially like the services and assessments on private property. Initially, the thought was that this would be a grant sharing, a sharing cost. You know, one of the things in, in our community is that we have a lot of older trees, we also have some, a lot of elderly citizens that are on tighter budgets, and so what happens is the trees get neglected, and then someone comes and buys the home, and they don't necessarily understand, and then we get one of these heavy march snows, and property damage, and stuff like that starts happening, because the trees have not been maintained, and they start breaking and falling on fences and garages and in people's yards and stuff. So I think it's important that we help people figure out, like, like help them figure out how to maintain their old trees that we have. Originally, the thought was that it would include removal, pruning, and repl, and/or replacement, or and/or all three. So, and, and sharing that cost. So if one resident needs one tree removed, another one trimmed, and then they want to replace a tree, then that would all be part of what they could get done with the grant program. But they would pay in advance, and they'd have to bring, you know, before and after pictures and paid receipts, and then they would get half, up to, I would say, like up to 50% of the money they spent back. So you could really make your budget go further, because I'm assuming that these examples you gave us are paying full price, is that true? Those are based on our... Those are based on our, the prices that we bid out to our contractual service.
So you could really actually get quite, quite a significant amount done in our community. So one thing is that you had said about not being able to manage it. I did reach out and to a couple of the Board of Directors for Local Works. It would have to go to their board to be voted on, but initially, they both sounded excited to be able to help with this program. So if that was something that we wanted to do is ask them if they could do the program management. And one thought I had about that, of course, they would need to get paid for their time. It's not a new concept to that, to that staff because they manage the Wheat Ridge Business District, which is a grant matching program. And so it's completely within their wheelhouse, but you know, we would have to figure out some parameters, like do, do the residents pay a thirty-dollar fee to be able to apply for the grant and then they get half of what they spend on their trees back? Another thing to keep in mind is that it would be nice if we could utilize local contractors and that's, that have their business license here, not just their, not just their tree, like, what, arborist license?
Tree license.
Tree license. So, but they also have their business license in Wheat Ridge, so that we would be supporting local businesses. So those were kind of my thoughts about that, is that if they did use somebody that was in Wheat Ridge, they could get a little bit, a little bit more with the Wheat Ridge Business District. If you used a licensed general contractor that has a business license in Wheat Ridge, you get an additional ten percent on your grant. It wouldn't necessarily have to be additional ten percent, but maybe you could get a little bit more if you used one of our local businesses. So going down the, going on down the little list, I have a different list than what you have up there. Geographic area, I would say, would be all of Wheat, my suggestion would be all of Wheat Ridge. Number of trees to be removed would be, would be dependent on how much, how far we can move our dollar. I don't think it would be limited to just removal, should include removal, pruning, and planting. I think that the program should last until we're out of money and I think the residents should share in the cost. Income level qualification is kind of a rough one. I, I think there's value to that, but then it also adds to the administrative level and then first come, first served. And then I'd like to say that we, if you utilize a Wheat Ridge business, that you would get additional funding at certain percent more.
Ms. Dozeman.
So I would say that we would have to have the contracts approved, like the residents would have to come to whatever managing organization and, like, I would, I would say that it would be difficult to advertise this program and then have a citizen cut down a tree and then bring it forth and us no longer have any money or them not qualify for whatever reason. So I think that we kind of have to be forward-thinking in that respect and have some sort of system in place where the citizens are probably getting okayed before they go and do the work, just so that we're not, like, pulling the rug out from underneath them. And I wanted to ask staff, like, how would it look if the city were to manage it as opposed to an outside, or as opposed to local works?
We would potentially need more staffing. Again, it depends on how much money you want to put towards it, how many trees, what your expectations are for how many you want to get done per year. So we'd have to get some direction on that to determine what type of staffing, additional staffing maybe needed. And you know, I think we had thought about local works maybe administering, local works would probably just administer the pre-approval process and the, and the grant process for us. Staff time would still be involved in the assessments and, and the removal and pruning of the trees. And we would probably wouldn't remove and prune them themselves, but we would do the, probably work on the assessments and, and work with the contractors to get the work done.
Ms. Dozeman, go ahead.
It sounds like that is just adding steps to the process and honestly adding cost. And so it would be kind of taking away money from these funds as opposed to if somebody, I mean, when we're, when we're talking about a private entity going about and reaching out to contractors and having them prune their trees or remove their trees, it, it wouldn't be as much of a cost as it would to have somebody from the city to come do an assessment and also have to go through the city for an assessment and whatnot. So I just, I love this idea. I think it's a great idea. That's why I supported it. I just don't want to be adding so many bureaucratic steps as to be taking away from funds that should just be going directly to the citizens.
What step specifically? Were you talking about the city doing the assessments?
Yeah, no, as far as assessments go or also like the pre-approval process or paying local works, an outside agency to handle it for us. It just, yeah, seems like we're kind of draining the coffers doing that.
So you're-
As opposed to the citizens getting that money directly.
And, and just allowing them, just give them the money upfront, allow them to, to do the, the work themselves and hire their own contractor?
Right, or having them be pre-approved, like having their contractor do the assessment, get an estimate of cost, submit it to the city, and then we can say, okay, we'll share this cost up to this percentage.
Mr. Matthews.
Being kind of an old dinosaur, I guess I need to go back and ask a much more basic question. I always thought that private property ownership and private property rights included some level of responsibility to take care of your own property. Before we have a lot of discussion on are we going to take out trees for people, I think we need to figure out where does that level of individual responsibility to take care of your own property start, stop, and end? I mean, are we going to start painting their house for them? If they need a window replaced, do we need to come in and do that for them? I can understand sometimes that they have to participate and pay and we do city sidewalks, but that's on right-of-way. When did we get in the business of maintaining individuals' properties for them?
Thank you. Additional comments? Questions? Ms. Hoppe?
I just kind of wanted to try to clarify something with Ms. Dozeman. So you, I guess my thought was that they have to already do the work and already pay the money and they have to prove that they did the work and before they would get their money. So there would be no, there would be no, here's your money ahead of time until the work was done. So, okay, clear on that. And then the other part is, you know, I honestly think that if you're getting twenty-five-hundred dollars from, from a grant, the thirty dollars to have someone manage that program so that we don't have to do it in our, in-house with our staff is, is a reasonable cost. And like I said, that, you know, local works, they haven't said yes yet, but they are, it's completely within their wheelhouse and they can, you know, absolutely pick that up pretty quickly if they say yes to it. So the only thing is, you know, you said you want to make sure that there's money, right? Which is a good point. I don't want to go and spend ten thousand dollars thinking I'm getting five and then get there and be like, oh, we're out of money. But, so there could be some sort of a pre-application process where it's just you fill out the application and you take the pictures of your trees, because we also do some of this stuff with, again, with the Wheat Ridge Business District. It's a lot like the program we do where we know, you know, we have this many applications and we know approximately how much money that's going to cost us. And so then if somebody comes to us and says, you know, we need this larger grant for a hundred thousand dollars, we'll know right off if we have that money for them or not. So, so maybe some sort of pre-application where they have to take the pictures of it and fill out a pre-up and then, you know, move forward from, from there, just so that they have a heads-up.
Ms. Davis.
So I, I just have a question. I mean, I, I somewhat feel similar to Larry on, like, where does this end, that, you know, we're, we're taking care of people's yards for them. But I also see some yards that it's like, oh, my goodness, I want to cut that person's tree. And, but then I, I have a question of like, like where do we draw the line on the tree? So like, to me, I'm thinking, okay, I'm just thinking of my own tree. So like, for instance, I have a linden that I know is going to need pruned this year because it's about, mm, three, four years, it starts getting real heavy. So for health reasons, it needs to get thinned out so it gets up in nice and perky again. So I know my linden's going to need pruned this year because it needs to perk up so that the branches are all heavy. So like in that situation, okay, so I think I'm falling into bullet number three of pruned. So then I would take a picture and I'd be like, okay, my linden needs pruned because it's all heavy and then once it's pruned, it's going to be all light. So would that be like a tree being, that's, okay, my tree needs pruned and I get a picture? But it's, it's not like my neighbor's tree that is like, holy cow, that tree needs taken down, you know? So I guess is it like trees that are, I, I'm afraid going to be falling on my house kind of tree? Or is it my general maintenance, I'm a good citizen and I get my tree pruned every three to five years kind of pruning? So I guess that's my other question and it kind of falls back into Larry's bucket of, you know, is it just general pruning and I'm smart and I know how to use scholarship and grant programs and I get it done for me? Or is it, oh, my gosh, this is going to fall on my car if my neighbor doesn't get this tree taken care of type of program?
Okay. Mr. Fitzgerald and then Mr. Urban on deck.
I think we could save a lot of money if we just buy Christie a chainsaw. The problem is-
And roundup.
You're right, that's right. I do remember that the original discussion was like you're talking, like, like you're talking about. However, that doesn't deal at all with the trees that are on city property and it doesn't deal with the ash borer problem that we're going to, we're going to have to face at one point or another. So, I don't know, I just wanted to bring that up. And by the way, I have no objection to, to local works administering the program for the citizen support process, whatever that process is. We still have to address the problem of what do, what do we do about city-owned trees and the ash borer problem?
Well, and honestly, that's why we, I had Joyce put together such a solid background of what our tree program is, because there are a lot of unnet needs for city trees also. So if, you know, we, we support a grant program too, but we just want to make sure council's aware that there are a lot of city needs also. And, and to speak to Larry's, Larry's comment, there, there's been a long history here in Wheat Ridge of, of doing things, very nice things for residents and, and the tree program was, was been one of them. As you can see, it's been, a lot of it's been cut. And that's another thing I wanted to make sure that this current council's aware of. A lot of our right-of-way trees, which in a lot of cities, property owners required to take care of the tree in the right-of-way in front of their house, we, we maintain those too. So that's something unique to Wheat Ridge. We are with our, a lot of our newer commercial developments are requiring those developments to, to manage and maintain those trees. If you look at the Sprouts Development on Kipling and Thirty-eighth, they, all those new perimeter trees in the right-of-way, they're, they're required to take care of those. Across the street at MCBN, they're required to take care of their own trees. And Ken's going to give an update in the next item on that, on the landscape inspection program, so.
Mr. Urban and Mr. Bond on deck.
Thank you, Mr. Merritt. You know, as it relates to the city's trees and those trees being grown and maintained on city property, I guess as it relates to sort of the urban canopy coverage, do we have any specific goals or metrics as it relates to how many trees the city owns and manages and what are we looking to get to as far as that canopy coverage at all? Or do we have any sort of reference point on that?
Margaret, Joyce could probably speak to that, but Margaret references a little bit in the, in the presentation when they're putting in that five-year plan together to, to, to look at the maintenance of trees. Are you talking about adding additional trees or just overall?
At the present time, the canopy is X and we want to get it to an increased number, whatever that might be, within city properties? Or is there a citywide goal relative to the canopy coverage? Is it, if you're looking down the city, how much of it is covered by trees and do we have a goal set for that type of progress?
Margaret, do you have any? Come to a mic if you, up here, Margaret.
So not specifically, we don't have, like, that we would have seventy-five percent of, you know, canopy cover. So that, that goal has not been set. We do know that we have, you know, eight thousand trees that we're managing between the parks and the right-ways. That doesn't include what's, what's going on in the Wheat Ridge Green Belt, open space areas. Certainly something we could set, that goal.
And I guess just as it relates to that, if you're looking at the city sort of by property owners, the city obviously owns a significant amount of land. The school district owns a significant amount of land and other property owners hold smaller shares. But I think as we look at our tree program, it would be beneficial to, number one, understand what is our overall goal, but number two, work with those large land-doning property owners that have the space for trees for us to place those in those locations versus trying to, to replace every personal individual tree. To Larry's point about the issue with why are we doing this for people and their yards? Well, many times when that branch lands on the power line in, in the back of the yard, now that's affecting me. So it's just, as much as we don't want to be coddling everybody and giving them everything that they need, at some point, when a neighbor's tree falls down, that impacts everybody. So I think there's some benefits to providing this program.
Mr. Bond.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I'm hoping that you guys will come over to my house and tell me that all my trees are in the right-of-way. I'll tell you my address afterward. I, I have to say thank you for the perspective overall because this is really great information and to really kind of see where we've, where we've come from, where we're at now. And, and I do think, the, the way I look at this, the important part for me would be safety and forestry management overall. And that would be the filter that I would put on this in, in a, in a general sense. I think to the point that, that Councilmember Urban was just making, you know, about, you know, trees that could, can, can because of their status can impact utilities or, or structures or streets or cars or all of those things. And that, and that's, and then perhaps from a forestry management standpoint, obviously things like the ash borer or unforeseen, you know, future disease that, that could be coming in, that could wipe out, you know, a good portion of our community. And if we're proud to be a tree city and, and really want the, the urban forest, then I think that that would be something to, to keep in mind. So that's, you know, that's one filter that I would put on, on this. You know, for me to support it, it would be really, to the extent that we're going to reach out and somehow cost-share in doing it, that really it would be looking at safety issues and looking at overall forestry management so that we can protect our, our urban forest and we can protect our citizens and our utilities. I, I think the point about how it's administered is, is a critical one on two fronts. One is, I think, showing how lean you are in the services that you provide and the scope of work that you have. I don't want to add anything to the table that takes you away from the things that, that you're doing and so we have to solve for that. And, and that's going to come at a cost and I appreciate Councilwoman Dozeman's comment, you know, about being efficient, not creating too many layers to this. However, I think, you know, we need to, there's going to be some layers, there's cost and administration to it and we ought to make sure that it's being parked in the right place. And I don't think adding, unless we add resources to staff, I don't think we should encumber them with any administrative additional services because that we'll just obviously suffer to do the tasks that, this long list of tasks that are really important. You know, and maybe finally, I, I think in some of these things, and I've felt this way a little bit about like the traffic calming and the things that we do where you kind of put something out on the website and it's just kind of like whoever gets there first gets, you know, gets their, their half-priced tree. I don't, I don't like that. And, you know, I think there does need to be some sort of equity consideration built in, which is either, you know, that, you know, we want to, to help, help you, I think there should be some need-based, you know, reason, whether it's income or, you know, you can't do the work or whatever it is that, that creates a mechanism, you know. As much as I want you to tell me that my trees are in the right-of-way, I don't think you should be supporting me taking care of my trees, unless they're in the right-of-way.
Additional comments? Ms. Dozeman?
I would agree that it should be more based on need as far as trees that are dangerous as far as to the public or it sounds like you guys have a lot of needs amongst our spaces as well. So I definitely think that we should be- So I definitely think that we should be, uh, talking about what that is and if there's a way that we can, uh, potentially have like the grant sharing program, uh, or the cost-sharing program in, in the form of a grant and also meet your guys' needs.
Ms. Hoppy?
I mean, I, I do think that, you know, I, I agree, like I said earlier, also, I agree with Mr. Bond and like I said earlier, I, I think it'd be really great if there, if it was something where we could make sure that the money went to where the need was. Um, how that gets managed, I don't, I don't know. Like, I, I guess we would need some information on, I mean, what, what can, what's considered a need, right? And, and so how many trees you have on your property that you have to take care of that are in bad shape or, um, you know, income level or, so I guess we'd need to have a, a deeper conversation about, about that to move that on. Um, when this initially had come up, the treasurer had mentioned it in his public comment and then I had several people call me within the next couple of weeks and say, hey, um, I had a couple of emails, you know, I think this is a good idea. When he had originally had said it, um, my impression was that we had tax dollars that we had to spend on the citizens. And so what ha- what now has come out of that information is that we have tax dollars, we have to spend on the citizens after they vote on what we spend it on. Is that correct?
Well, we're not quite there yet. Um, yeah, what, what Ms. Hoppy's talking about is, is the overage that, um, in revenues that we received in the bond for the first year. So we haven't finalized our books for two thousand seventeen, so we're investigating that with our tax attorneys on what we have to do. It's a little more complicated than just you have to give the money back. Um, so, um, there's different options. So I, I, I would probably leave that part off the table for now, um, until that's further, further discussed.
Yeah, so now, now the information basically is, is that it'll be coming out of our general budget, right? And so then do we, so then what choice do we make? Do we, um, do we pull it out of our general budget? I mean, I think it's a great, I think it's a great idea and I, and I think that we have citizens in our community that absolutely financially could use the help. Um, and for safety issues. But, um, you know, it, but then it's kind of like, well, do we want to pull it out of our budget? I guess that's where we have to kind of look at, like, are we okay with where the money's coming from? Do we want to pull it out of our budget? And, um, you know, start looking at it that way too.
Ms. Dozeman?
So I just want to point out clarification. I thought what we were discussing was, um, the reserve of the monies coming out of the roofing permits, not the two E funds.
I don't think it was ever really determined. It was just, I know people have probably been talking behind, behind the scenes about potential additional funds. Yes, we have, uh, additional revenues, unanticipated revenues last year from the, the, from the roofing permits. Um, and there is a potential that, um, well, we, we do know we've brought in more revenues in the first year of tax increase than we're allowed to collect. So, um, but we haven't determined exactly legally, um, what we have to do with that. Either go to vote, ask citizens to let us keep the money or put it towards something else, but that won't happen until, that decision won't happen until we take it to the vote in November.
So when, when our treasurer was discussing this, uh, program specifically, it was on the back end of the roofing permits, um, and the money that we have collected after the hailstorm, right? So...
I think his first initial comments was because of the bond. But we do have extra money from the roof permits and we ended up with, what, almost three million dollars. Um, at the end of last year, it was almost three million dollars. So, um, and we only spent two hundred and eighty of that, I think, in contract labor, if I remember correctly. So we do have the extra money there.
No, a mi- a mi- a million.
A million?
Over a million in contract labor, yeah.
So, uh...
So I guess I'll try to push for a, a consensus then if there's not...
Yeah.
Yeah.
There you go, Joyce. I got your...
Uh, Mr. Matthews has the floor.
Since we brought up the money of excess taxes, you know, I can recall Councilwoman Davis asking two years ago, couldn't we please come up with fifty thousand dollars even to help fix some of our drainage problems that are actually on public right-of-way and that flood people's houses? Um, I'm just totally against maintaining people's homes for them. If they can't do it themselves, that's too bad, so sad. Public circus comes through and periodically trims trees over their lines. So I'm not, I mean, if you have a microburst, yeah, maybe a perfectly healthy tree falls down on a power line and that affects me too, but that's life. But for crying out loud, if we're gonna spend excess dollars, let's spend it in the public right-of-way where we actually benefit people's welfare and safety with flood issues and things of that nature.
And I think we've been...
Ms. Davis?
And I, I also think, I mean, I, I appreciate the idea and I, you know, I think it's a good idea, but we have been talking about sidewalks from Thirty-Eighth to, you know, from Youngsfield to, to Kipling and things like that. I mean, this isn't like a, this isn't like just a small chunk of change, you know? So I, I think there are, you know, some things that, I mean, I, I appreciate that Mr. DiTulio was like off the cuff, like, oh, let's do a tree program and, you know, that kind of thing. But I, I mean, I think it, if, if there are some things either between the bond and the roofing that there is a small windfall, that there might be some, I mean, we have been talking about drainage and we just came up with, um, I, you know, the, the lights and, and we might be a little short there and, and it, and it is about the bond, that is extra bond money kind of thing that, that might need to be used. So I, I think that maybe, and maybe we could still do the, the, the trees too, but I, I, I'm not sure that it's, it's something that we need to like, and kind of knee-jerk, but, um, you know, I know there are some, some other things. I mean, we, we keep talking about all of our capital improvement projects that, that are always put to the wayside and so, so I, I just think there are some things, if, if we are, um, a little flush with some money, that there are things that we have put aside for a while that, I mean, again, I appreciate that, but I think there are some things.
Ms. Hoppy?
Yeah, I think I'm just gonna try for a consensus here, um, and say, um, you know, 'cause I think that if we do this, that it should be for people, I agree, it should be for people in need. Um, but we don't really have any parameters on what that really means. And so, um, I wonder if, um, I wonder if staff has like some data that they could pull out to tell us, like, what are the, what are, are the kind of median incomes of our community? You know, not necessarily Colorado, but of our community? And, um, and then maybe we could look at, um, in the future, we could look at, if we want to do this, then, and do it for people in need and have the information for that. So I guess my consensus would be that we current, we table the program as it is currently, but ask for more information on, um, if we want to do it and make sure that it's through a financial need, that we have some information on, um, what an income le- level qualification would be.
Yeah, we can put together, um, some options on that if that's the direction you like. Um, there, there's tons of grant programs out there, some that we are, we're involved in and that are need-based and, and it's based on household income or, or, or what. We can put together some options for you guys.
Would you be looking, I had a, I had a question on that. Would that, um, would this be sort of owner occupiers of property or is this for, for landlords renting it out or...
I would think it'd be owner occupier.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so I guess, so that's my consent, that's my ask for the consensus, is that, uh, we look at income level qualifications to move forward with this program. And so if we can agree with that.
Oh.
No consensus? Okay?
Well, it's a, there, not really cons- I don't see consensus on that, so is there, um, is there more discussion on that, that portion of it or...
Well, I was just gonna say, the, the problem is, um, we could end up, we could spend a lot of money on this. If, if we were gonna do a bang-up job and hire people and, uh, treat our eight thousand trees and give money to, uh, um, to matching grants for, for trees, I think it's a worthy goal, but, uh, I guess we don't have consensus. But I, I, I think we have other things that we have to talk about before we talk about this. And I, 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 to me, the priority would be, uh, trees that, um, affect the public good. So safety in the public good, so not, not necessarily ornamental trees. But there are other things I would rather spend money on, is what I'm saying in this case.
Mr. Pond?
Yeah, I, I, I would've voted for that consensus. I don't know, I, I was waiting for a comment, so, so I'm not sure that would've swayed anything if we, if we actually voted. So I think it may still have gone down, but I, I, I think, I think it's worthwhile just to kind of come back around as we do in the budget cycle and, and, and look at all of these things. We're gonna talk about CIP again, we're gonna talk about the drainage and, and, um, and frankly, just even this forestry program, horticulture program that...
Well, that's the thing, is we, we've sort of gutted that over the last fifteen years.
Yeah, like, maybe we, maybe we, we owe back some, some effort in that space, um, y- y- you know, even bef- before we get to this level. So, um, you know, I, I, I think it was, I just, I appreciate actually you guys bringing it forward and, and the staff input on it because there's a lot of things that I didn't know that I learned tonight.
Lot of good information that you brought us. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as it relates to the income qualifications and those types of things, I think we need to be careful in the sense that we're generating a, a lot of paper around planting trees and I want to try to make it as streamlined as possible because it, to me, it seems like if I've gotta qualify income-wise to plant a tree, it, it's gonna peter out pretty quickly because it just seems like, uh, if you put all these restrictions on it, then people aren't gonna participate in it or they're gonna see it as too burdensome. So I would be in favor of as less regulations as possible because if someone wants to plant a tree in Wheat Ridge and we can help them do that, I'm all for that. But, uh, I think we need to focus more on what is the city property and their, and our tree inventory on our own property and how can we improve that before we start funding planting trees on individual properties?
Um, is, is there sort of consensus then to postpone any action on this item? Okay, so we'll, uh, postpone indefinitely this item. Thank you very much. Good report, it's really interesting. I had no idea that, that we had at one time such a robust forestry program. I lived in eastern Wheat Ridge for forty-two years. I've taken care of a lot of trees. We took, you know, the one out on the, on the streets, a huge big tree and I've done a lot of money, I've spent a lot of money on it myself, so I'll be calling you. (laughing). Mr. Fitzgerald?
I would, I would just like to say, we do have to think about the ashbore problem.
Yes, we do.
We, we have to, we have to be sort of working on that because it's gonna take us...
Five minutes. Five, you wanna be out in five? You know, you did that already, you need to take a break. Uh, we've been at, we've been, uh, in meeting almost, almost, uh, two and a half hours. Uh, do people want us, wanna go through item number four and item number five or would you like to take a break now? And is there a time estimate on item number four?
We do have a, a PowerPoint. Meredith, it's, what, it may be a ten-minute presentation, does that sound about right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Then I'd like to take a motion to, to, uh, to take a, a ten-minute break. Okay.
(laughing).[1400.88]
Believe we are ready to reconvene our meeting. Thank you very much. We are going to move on to item number four, landscape inspection program update. And we have a staff report. Mr. Goff?
We do.
We do.
Yeah, great.
So Meredith Recker, Wheat Ridge Community Development Planning Division. So I guess the topic of tonight is why landscaping? We talked trees, we talked parks. Now we're going to talk about private property landscaping. So managed landscaping provides numerous environmental, social, emotional, and physical benefits. It reduces noise. It makes development more aesthetically pleasing. It can provide gathering places like Civic Center Park. It's also good for the environment and overall has a positive impact on the appearance of the city. City Council has identified the physical appearance of the city as a priority. And primarily, we do that with code enforcement efforts. As folks are aware, whenever we have new construction, particularly multifamily or commercial or industrial construction, there is required landscaping that needs to be installed based on an approved landscaping plan. And we also we go out and check the landscaping plan and make sure that the the correct plants are are had have been planted pursuant to the approved plan before we can sign off on a certificate of occupancy. However, a lot of times after that, maintenance does not occur or may not occur. A lot of times, plant materials die and they're not replaced. Sometimes they're removed because somebody's sign isn't isn't visible anymore. So in the summer of 2017, Planning Division created and managed a program for the proactive enforcement of landscaping. So, you know, we didn't have a specific area of the city we were concentrating on. What we tried to do was to focus on property that's developed within the last ten years. Property in the archive files that we knew we would have a landscape plan in those, which makes it abundantly easier than trying to recreate something you don't have. We focused on commercial, industrial, and more recent residential plan developments. And we looked at properties primarily on the city's collectors and arterials. So the process was we hired an intern, we developed a list of properties, we found the approved landscape plans in the city archives. And then usually it was myself and the intern who performed the site visits and documented the areas of concern. We then contacted the property owners and business owners with the documentation of findings. We usually performed a site visit after that to kind of walk through whomever was the landscaper or the maintenance person. And then we continued to work with the owners to achieve compliance. We got a little bit of a late start, and so due to time and weather constraints, we did offer a landscape restoration agreement deferring completion of the landscape improvements until June of 2018. So what did we see when we got out there? This is pretty typical. It was a it's a landscape island in the Safeway Shopping Center. And you can see that they let let their rock mulch kind of wash away. And so sometimes it was really an easy fix, get some bags of more rock mulch and cover those up. Otherwise, there were trees partially dead. This one looks like it's got some damage. You can see in the bark that there's some slits, something happened to it. Again, this is another landscape island, kind of typical. Looks like there they had bark mulch in this situation that has all washed away. And there's one where it's kind of cockeyed, sorry, where they've got some living and some dead. And then this one is a full-on-out tree that's died. Again, some spruce trees. This is in one of our newer residential developments. And let's see. So you've seen sort of the before shots. Now let's look at some after shots. So remember those trees, the the dead spruces? These are six spruce trees that got planted. And they are thriving. They fixed the sprinkler system. We ended up having to go out there a couple of times, but it was certainly worth the effort on staff's part. This is another typical tree that we saw in that particular development. We had about twelve street trees that were required to be planted in front of the individual homes. And twelve of those were dead. So this is a before picture. This is an after picture. They replanted, they adjusted the mulch around the tree. So anyway, this was a success. And again, this is another commercial development over by Kipling, areas where the sod just doesn't look very good. So not only did they replace things, but they also, I think, tuned up the sprinkler system so that it was more efficient and actually did coverage and was successful in bringing back that lawn. So what were our stats? Well, we visited forty-five sites. Thirty-four owners responded to our initial correspondence. Like I say, a lot of these were commercial and industrial properties with owners of estate. Sometimes it was hard to figure out who you wanted to talk to, whether it was the owner or the business manager or so on. Twelve of the properties were brought into compliance. Eight owners did initial work and signed the agreement postponing the additional improvements until June of 2018. Eleven owners are still in correspondence with staff. Ten owners did not respond, and we will make contact with them again this spring. Two owners objected to additional investment. They just wanted to cut everything down and not replace anything. And then we had one property that was fully in compliance with no improvements necessary. That was a little restaurant further east on Twenty-Ninth Avenue. So A-plus on that one. Sorry about that, bud. So this is the site visit map. As you can see, you know, we we didn't target one particular area of the city. This is Thirty-Eighth Avenue as you go from Sheridan over to Young Field. This is Forty-Fourth Avenue. We actually hit some more sites up here in our industrial areas. So we tried to mix it up a little bit. And the cost of the city? Well, the cost to the city was pretty minimal. We did hire an intern. She worked twenty-five hour twenty-five hours per week for about five months. I had some involvement just to answer questions. A lot of times I met with the property owners. They liked to hear like to hear the negotiations negotiations and discussion with, you know, kind of a senior staff person. So I put in about seven hours per per week with Natalie. And then use of the city equipment, we have computer stations. We have pool pool vehicles with public works that we were able to use, a camera, and office supplies. And the most interesting thing is most property owners agreed that quality landscaping is vital to maintain a positive image of the city, and they were willing to work with us. So that was pretty fulfilling to me to see that people really cared. They're they care about the community. They care about how their properties look. And that's the end of my presentation. I think Ken's got some additional comments he'd like to make about our efforts.
Yeah, I'm curious to hear council's thoughts on this. It's something I know I've been thinking about for a while and and some something, you know, I've done in in previous jobs with other municipalities of, you know, we spend, as as Meredith said, you know, we spend a lot of energy and effort on the front end in adopting good landscape codes and our design guidelines as well and our mixed-use zoning. We do a lot of work on the front end in terms of reviewing landscape plans as part of whatever the entitlement process is, whether it's a public hearing or just a building permit or some sort of administrator review. We do a good job of conducting inspections and not granting COs. Or if we grant a CO without the landscaping fully in place, we take an escrow so that they will complete the work eventually. And then that's kind of historically been the end of the story, right? We we just kind of hope it gets maintained. And I think my goal, if council is supportive, is really, you know, trying to create an ethos where people maintain their properties, and that's kind of the expectation in the community. We started with kind of the low-hanging fruit with with a lot of the properties that we, you know, really had a relationship with because we, you know, took them through some sort of entitlement process in the last several years, so they they know that we all looked at landscape plans and came to agreement as to how they would comply with the city requirements. So we were pleasantly surprised with, as Meredith closed in her remarks, with the fact that people did seem to to get that this is important. And I think like anything like this, that people have to, you know, dig into their pockets for, and we're conscious of that, which is why, you know, we certainly work with people and work on annual budget cycles where, you know, maybe they acknowledge that they have the deficiencies, but they need to go back to their their boss or whoever their funding body is and say, we're going to request that for our 2018 budget. And we're we're fine to work with people like that. But we were we were pleased with the results, and if council's supportive, would love to work forward and do a slightly more robust program in in 2018, just to the extent that we'd like to start a little bit earlier. So budget a few more hours so that we can get get there right, kind of at the start of the growing season, and seize more opportunities to get things planned actually this growing cycle by the, you know, obviously, as I'm sure all of you know, fall can be a good time, you know, early, late, late summer, early fall can be a real good time to get things put back in the ground. So that's our goal, is to really engage them early, identify what shortfalls there there may be, shortcomings there might be, and then give them several months maybe to identify that funding, get a contractor on board if they're going to need to use a contractor, and see more even better results potentially by the fall by the end of the fall planting season. We've estimated six sixty-two hundred is what we spent in 2017, and we we had budgeted for that. We're suggesting that we request a budget supplemental because we did consciously did not budget for it in 2018. We wanted to have this conversation with you all and be able to report out on the program. And if you're supportive, we'd we'd move forward with a budget supplemental request of $10,000 to accommodate that earlier start and about an extra month or so of of having that intern on board.
Thank you. Discussion from council. Mr. Matthews?
Thank you, Ken. I appreciate your efforts on this. I have two questions. The first of all is one of your bullet lists here says you have a list of you put together a list of properties to inspect. How many how many you we finally did forty-five, but how many properties were on that list? And is it all-inclusive or did we just go to a certain amount of what we thought we could get done and then quit?
Well, the list, I'm not sure how many is on the the list of the landscape plans that we polled. It's more than the forty-five. We didn't get out to all of those sites.
I'm just trying to get an idea of scope for what we're looking at. You know, that we'd like to get around to everybody. Well, what's involved?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's it's safe to say it's 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 hundreds, you know, easily. The and, you know, you cycle you might need to cycle through on a, you know, three- or four-year kind of timeframe in terms of when you might be going back and visiting them again. Again, the hope is that the maybe the program gets easier over time as people just kind of know that the expectation is that they're going to get a visit from someone in our department every few years, and they might as well be proactive in in just staying ahead of that. And it starts to self-perpetuate itself. But but yeah, I would say to get to every site in the city, we'd have, I think, for the first time, we'd have still more than one. It wouldn't be just 2018. I mean, I think we'd have a couple of years' worth of work just to get out to all the sites.
Understood.
And so that's that's kind of the the magnitude.
And then my second question was what enforcement tools do we have if someone refuses to come into compliance?
We don't use this tool as much as maybe we should. We 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 have some ability, not some, we have the ability to use the administrative hearing process, so the same process that the code enforcement officers use to give an administrative citation and then go to the this kind of streamlined process with the administrative hearing officer. Because it was a pilot program, we hadn't had a conversation with you. We didn't take it to that level with any of the sites this past year, but that would be our our stronger enforcement option would be that process.
Additional questions? Ms. Davis?
I'm talking a lot today because we're talking trees and weeds and all that. And that's everybody know these are my favorites and snow removal, which we're almost past that. So I so I have a couple of questions. So I kind of would like to go to the enforcement thing, too, because the ten that didn't respond, that kind of just puts a catch in my get-along. Because the thing is, is that they're probably, I mean, it's probably even going to be worse this next year. And it's kind of so is the property is probably getting worse and worse. And and I guess the thing is, is that if they don't respond, then it's going to get worse. And and so I do feel like there should, I mean, if we have things in place that needs to address the issues, I think we need to put those things in place, especially, you know, from what you were saying, these were newer properties and they the expectation was outlined from the very beginning. So I think that we need to hold people accountable, just like we're supposed to our dogs and kids and all those kinds of things. So I don't think it's anything they don't know, and I think we need to hold people accountable. And then I think my other issue or my other thing is, is that I appreciate these are newer newer areas. But I I think how are we handling the older areas? Because I think that's what else I'm seeing more, and and Chief Brennan always gives my pictures as I'm driving down, and I send him pictures of things, is that unfortunately, we have this lovely newly landscaped area, and across the street, we have a it used to be actually a rocked area, but now it's full of crab weed that you don't see the rocks because it's full of weeds. And you see something that looks like a shrub, but it's really not a shrub. It's a weed that's grown into looking like a shrub, but it's a weed. And and so how are we handling those types of properties? Because I think, you know, here's somebody who's taking the efforts and pride in in a new development, and then we have the guy next to them or gal or property across the street from them. And, you know, they're just ill-kept. And and I know, again, if I take a picture and send it to Chief Brennan, code enforcement will go out there, but is that a part of this program? Or, I mean, I'll be an intern for seven hours a week or four hours, you know, God help you all. But but I mean, I think I'm wondering if we can do like a phase of two hours of of this week be that because I think those are almost the more ill-kept. I mean, a sad-looking, bad bush on a new development isn't as bad as a whole rock bed that's full of, you know, weeds.
Yeah, I think there's there's we agree. You know, the there's some challenges with some of the older properties in that, one, we may or may not have as good of a landscape plan. We because we haven't been actively enforcing over the years, there could be a lot more deficiencies. So it's a much bigger ask. And I think what we often run into is, and Meredith alluded to this, is irrigation issues, right? Where they've they've let the irrigation system basically fall apart, right? So it no longer works. And we all know if you don't have a consistent irrigation system in Colorado, stuff just ain't going to live. So they they become bigger issues. Doesn't mean we shouldn't do it. I couldn't agree more that we need to focus on those older properties as well. We have talked about whether, speaking of perpetuating the earlier conversation, you know, whether a carrot and a stick approach would make sense for some of those older properties where if there is some ambiguity as to what was required originally, we knew we had landscape standards in place at the time. So there's some ability to rely on that fact, that we could give them the code references that say there was a landscape requirement, and it would have, every evidence is that there was landscaping here by whatever evidence that is. But maybe. But maybe be in front of council with some sort of a, an expansion of that, that twenty, that local works grant program, because some, in some cases, these might be more kind of fundamental improvements if they have to really rip out some old stuff, rebuild an irrigation system, gets more expensive.
Well, and I think even like pull the weeds at least and put some rock down. I mean, even if it was just rock, but when it's, I mean, just ill-kept to the nth degree, I mean, it, it's not even an attempt to even care at all, in my opinion.
No, and, and we, we definitely encountered sites like that where clearly they don't, they didn't budget for, they don't budget for landscape maintenance essentially, right? And that's a challenge, but I think, again, in the spirit of kind of changing the mindset of some of these property owners, we just, it'll take some time to kind of create that expectation of it. It wasn't just, "You showed us a pretty landscape plan, we planted it, you inspected it, and that's it. We don't really much care about it." We're just going to try and change that mentality over time.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess along those lines of changing the behaviors over time, what I'd like to see is if we could reach out to all property owners who have that plan in place and notify them just basically, "Did you realize that your property contains this requirement?" And some, either through transfer or sale, what have you, may not be aware of the fact that this plan is in existence, or somehow is just simply not on their radar at all. So if you were to take those couple hundred properties that have that plan in place and say, "Here's your current plan. There is no enforcement at this time, but we're notifying you that this is the plan, and then in the subsequent year, we may follow up with you under our enforcement proceedings." So you're giving them fair warning, and then that covers that group versus going out and trying to find the offenders and trying to deal with one-offs, whereas if we could just hit everybody at the same time and say, "Were you aware of this?", and give them the opportunity to fix it, versus having to hunt for individual property owners and the like. So I'd like us to try to more of that shotgun approach.
Yeah, we could certainly look at, at what additional outreach would be a proactive approach, to give people a fair warning, and, and maybe when we show up in 2019, they've, they've started to work on, or.
Then as you come knocking, they're, they're aware of the fact that they disregarded that previous notification, and now it's more of an enforcement matter. But if we've given them a leg up and say, you know, "In a year from now, we're going to be reviewing the landscape plans of all property owners, and so here's yours. You have a year to figure out. If yours is already up to snuff, then disregard this, but if you need time, we're giving you that year to figure it out."
Ms. Hoppe?
Yeah, I don't think that's necessarily a bad idea at all. I think that Doc has a good idea. Part of that is that, you know, you guys are saying you're going to utilize an intern. I think that you'd probably still have to utilize an intern to do that if you're printing all of those plans and sending them out to people. One question that I have is that it doesn't appear as the work that you already did is something that's overlapping with the TLC program, but it does appear as though in the future, near future, it could end up overlapping with the TLC program. And so what precautions are we taking to make sure we're not double-hitting people or that we're not sending out, that the TLC program's not already covering an area that we don't necessarily, that you wouldn't necessarily then have to go cover, and you could spend that time in other places?
Ms. Pond?
I support the, I support the idea of noticing, trying to kind of broadly get out the word to people. I think that, that supports our larger effort that we've been working on to communicate the need or the desire to clean up our city and, and giving people fair notice of that. However, I will say one of the things that I appreciated most about the approach was looking at corridors, you know, arterials, you know, specific, you know, areas that we know, and we've often discussed in different contexts here, are important for people's perception of our city as they're driving through, as they're looking to move here or any of those things. So I, I think it, I would prefer honestly to do both. I would prefer to send everyone out, you know, some, some notice that, that this is coming, but I would, I would, I would support specifically the request for $10,000 for this next year, to, to, to take the, the next, you know, next iteration of this and the next year of this, and to continue to look at these important corridors that have, I think, consequences for us if they look good or bad. And then one more piece, and I think we've alluded to it, and maybe I'm confused about it a little bit, obviously, you're going back and looking through entitlement process to the ones, you know, the things that you have on record and all that. And, you know, I think for many of us, you know, you probably don't have my entitlement process for my house, and, and so kind of like, I guess you're not coming knocking. However, we have a code, we have a code section and code enforcement that is, that should go kind of, you know, I think should start to, we should really start to see this working in conjunction. I think that's important, by the way, when we're approaching either new residential developments, commercial or industrial, you know, folks, that they're seeing us also, you know, walk this talk amongst ourselves in our, in our old residential areas, going out and enforcing our codes at people's houses essentially. Because if we're knocking on a large developer or a commercial door and saying, "You, you have to kind of clean your act up," but we're not doing that same thing, you know, across the code enforcement that we've, we've been talking about, and we've talked about this for, for years, about landscape codes and weeds and all that other stuff, then I think that's, in the long run, I think that becomes problematic. You know, it seems one-sided. So I assume we're, you know, maybe I'm just saying that out loud, and that's what we're doing, but I think it's important that, that these, you know, that these things work together.
Let me, let me ask a question on that now. On, on single-family residential developments, we do not have a landscape code. Is that correct?
Well, we, we, yes and no. I say yes and no because it's come up recently in, relative to a specific property, but we have a tree requirement in the front yard, and we have language in the code that requires the front yard be 100% landscaped. But it's, and jump in here, Meredith, but, but it's not particularly quantified. I mean, it, it, so it's, it's, so what does that mean, right? 100% landscaped, the areas that aren't hard-surfaced are supposed to be 100% landscaped. It's, it's kind of hard to enforce. But at a minimum, we do have a tree requirement that we enforce through the single-family permitting requirement. For planned residential developments, like I always call it "doubt overlook," I know it's called the fireside at Applewood, you know, they had a specifically in their planned zoning documents, landscape requirements that we enforce as part of the certificate of occupancy process as well.
But that is formulated more in the context of an HOA or an association?
Some of it is, yeah. Certainly, some of the HOAs are responsible for, in some cases, kind of the front yards, certainly the streetscape. And that's been, I know, an interesting dynamic because we've had several projects, that being one of them, Perrin's Row being another one, where, you know, the, it was in the process of being handed off to the HOA, you know, and so who's responsible during warranty periods, or, you know, kind of have to navigate those dynamics. And HOAs, particularly when they start out, you know, they're not necessarily used to managing a landscape contract and appropriately budgeting for it. I mean, their, their HOA should have anticipated that in terms of what, what they're assessing, but it's not always perfect in terms of the budgeting.
Right.
We got, we got really lucky. A lot of the pictures that you saw were from the Yukon Grove development, and it was just exactly that situation. We sent the notice both to the developer and to the homeowners association, and when we went out and met with them, the homeowners, you know, the HOA told us, they said, you know, "We got a quote of 18 grand. We, we can't afford that." So we were able to get with the developer and with a little bit of staff nudging. They, they replaced all the dead materials and even did some trim. They had these big cottonwoods and elms with all these branches that were hanging out. So we, we actually got more than they were required to do, and we got lucky on that one because it was a willing, a willing developer.
I have a couple of maybe suggestions or, or a point. One of them, I think it's really, I think it's a great idea to sort of raise the public profile, that this is a desirable thing in our community, and it could be as easy as sort of in the connections and other correspondence and other ways that you communicate what we want to do with our city, is that on, you know, new developments or, you know, developments are required to have landscaping and required to maintain landscaping. The other thing that, that, you know, sort of comes to mind with respect to a newer project is that it, it probably would, would be, A, good for the city and be good for the, for the property owner if you would do a sort of eleven-month inspection of the property. You know, typically, his, his landscaping contractor will have given him a year's warranty so that, so that, you know, a, a property owner may say, "Well, you know, gee, the city, as part of their services that I get from the city comes by at eleven months and alerts me that these things were, you know, not living, and I have now a recourse back to someone," so that I'm not coming out of my pocket, but it's out of the warranty, and you may sort of get some double duty out of that.
Good idea.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
I think this is money well-spent. I, I, you know, for $10,000, improving the entire look of our city is well worth it. If everybody is ready, I'm, I'm ready to make a consensus.
No, I'm voting.
I just got maybe one comment from me before we go, and, and, you know, I think as Ken mentioned, we're attacking some of the low-hanging fruit now, which some of those are easier to deal with and get those people to comply with what we're asking, but it's, it's probably going to get harder and harder as the further we go, and, and ten, just so you realize, $10,000 may not get us very far once we get further down the road. So I don't know, Ken and I haven't had the time to talk about this, but I'm not sure what internally, if we, if you wanted this to be more proactive and do more sooner, maybe it's a higher budget. I don't know if we have the capacity to manage an intern more time, but maybe something we can reevaluate during the budget process and, for 2019. But, you know, if this is something council really wants to do, we can, we can put more effort into it. It's just going to take some more money and more, more staffing, but, so that's something to think about, too.
Well, I, I would make a, I would ask for consensus that we budget up to $15,000, and we make staff aware that council is willing to use the stick if necessary. And if anybody wants to add, there were so many good suggestions. I, I just wanted to do a simple consensus, but if anybody wants to add, I'm willing.
Mr. Matthews?
I just question if you want to draw a line in the sand at $15,000. I would like to see just a little language in there to give the staff some wiggle room where if it comes out to 17,500, or, you know, an approximate $15,000 instead of just a line.
We'll have to bring back a specific budget supplemental, so.
I'd like to see all those numbers, and then we can dicker price with you.
Okay. You could say not to exceed 20 if you want, if you want to give us a little wiggle room or something, and whatever we spend this year, we'll spend. If we don't spend it, it goes back into the reserves.
Okay, I'm modifying my question, my consensus to say up to 20. You want to bid me higher?
Do we have, okay, we have a motion for consensus. Is there consensus around the table?
That's the last time you'll ever see me ask for a price raise.
And I, and I had, I had sort of one, I had one other thing that sort of came to mind, and, and you mentioned the stick. Is there any kind of carrot that, that's available? You know, and I say that, you know, not, not totally tongue-in-cheek, but I mean, it's, you know, the heavy hand of government, is there any sort of incentive program, or, maybe not incentive program, but is there, is there only a stick to make this happen, or is there a carrot, you know, an award, or, you know, something, something out there?
We've talked about that, of whether we could, you know, they could get some sort of a, you know, badge of honor of being compliant with the city's, you know, program. We haven't fleshed that out to know what that would look like, but it's a, something we've thought a little bit about. There is still the grant program through the Wheat Ridge Business District, so that's a.
Ms. Hoppe?
I just would like to mention that the landscape portion of that is a pretty low grant, but we do have the visual impact grant, which, because the landscape part of that, and it turned into a lot of different arguments, but is rock landscape? It, you know, can you see it from the street? Is asphalt landscape, even though it makes the whole area look better? You know, so, so the landscape portion is pretty small, but there is the visual impact grant that is available. And, and so if there, if it turns into a point where there's, you know, massive numbers of requests for that, and Bud is now new on that board with us, then I think that Bud and I could come back and let you guys know.
But I'd like to add that the rules do not allow those grants for private homes. Isn't that right? That's.
But they're doing business.
Right. Just for commercial.
Commercial properties, so, thank you. There is consensus on that, yes. Ms. Davis?
But maybe some of the carrot could be your suggestion, that part of the, part of the thing that you guys develop in your plan is to go back to some of these newer developments at 11 months to, to look at their newly planted items to get into the warrant, make sure they're in the warranty with their landscaper. So maybe that could be kind of the carrot to these folks to say, "Hey, this is how we're going to try to help you to make sure that your newly planted items mature appropriately. We're going to come back at 11 months and, and check your property." So maybe that could be a part of your plan.
And maybe there would be a.
That's kind of a carrot.
Maybe an opportunity to maybe take some of the horticulture expertise that the city has, that we heard in a preview, you know, in our previous thing. Maybe that's, maybe that's part of the incentive, is that, is that when we come at 11, 11 months to inspect your, your property, we bring someone with us who can give you some ideas, and maybe there's some other resources. And so it's a, it's sort of a learning and a, and a beneficial service that, you know, that we provide.
And, and it's a, it's a bit of, we've used them a little bit on some case-by-case basis, but not kind of systematically as part of the program, just because they have, as you all saw tonight, stretched resources, to say the least. One thing I would say, just in terms of, you know, we're, we lucked out with a really good intern last year who had some qualifications in, in terms of education in the landscape arena, forget her specific credentials, but, and she may, in fact, be available to assist us again this year. But we're cautious of making sure that we're not trying to pretend that we're horticulturalists or imminently qualified. So the language that we use in the letters is, I don't want to say soft, but it's definitely, we're not saying, "Your tree is dead," right? Because there's, there's different degrees of dead. And sometimes something might look diseased, but could be brought back to life. So we, we try and not overplay our, our landscape knowledge, and then if they come back and say, "Actually, we're, we're working on that, we're treating it, it's not dead," and we'll, we'll certainly defer to that.
Mr. Urban?
I don't want to, I don't want to beat a dead tree here, but I guess to the point of whether the city is an expert in horticultural aspects is, you know, how do, we heard earlier tonight about the 102 annual displays, the 109 perennial beds, and the 108 shrub beds, and if we're going to be putting the, the property owner's feet to the fire, we want to make sure our, you know, house is in order as well, and making sure that all the property in the right of ways that we're maintaining are as well properly landscaped. And I know that this is sort of two ends of the house, and this isn't really your bailiwick, but I guess as it relates to encouraging property owners to fix up their property, we need to make sure everything on our end is squared away as well.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think just what you said, it's two, two ends of the house. What Ken was referring to is their staff are not horticultural specialists, and, and we unfortunately don't have a big enough horticultural staff to reach, to use them all the time, so unless you guys want to, and as Joyce said, we're going to be requesting probably additional staff for, for the forestry department next year, so.
Very good. All right. Well, thank you very much for bringing that to us.
Thank you.
You have directions. Item number five is elected officials' reports. If anyone has a report, please raise your hand, and I will call on you. Seeing none, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you much.